Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have three study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is a city plan update. Item number two is a homeless navigation program update. And item number three is a legislative advocacy program. We will start our meeting, as we start most of our meetings, with a public comment. I don't have anyone in council chamber signed up to speak, and no one has signed up to speak online, so we will move past our citizens' right to speak and go to agenda item number one. This is our city plan update. Mr. Goff, if you want to introduce this item.
Well, actually, I'm going to turn over Ella to do that, so we'll get right into it.
Great, thank you. I am Ella Stevie, Senior Planner and the Project Manager for the City Plan. Thank you for having us here tonight. We are very excited to discuss the city plan with you. This meeting is part of Phase Three of engagement for this project. And in this phase, we're translating everything we heard in the first two phases into draft policy direction for land use, mobility, and we're going to be talking about how the city plan can facilitate peaceful coexistence between existing neighborhoods and future development. So we have today Eric, Amy, and Matt Ingalls with us from CZV, so I'm going to hand it over to them to give an overview where we are in the process and then dive into the content. Thank you.
Thanks, Ella. Here's our agenda for tonight. We've got time allocations on here. These are estimates, but a couple of things. One, hopefully we'll stick to this as a total amount of time, but also wanted to give a certain amount of weight to certain things over other things here, so we're going to go through some overview and updates. A lot of that's review. A lot of that is stuff we've talked about before. Some of it's a little bit new. And then we want to spend a lot of time tonight on the place type framework and our mobility framework. Those are key content areas for the conversation. So once again, the city plan is updating the comprehensive plan, which is, as of right now, called Envision Wheat Ridge. It's about vision and establishing vision and shared values, identifying priorities for the future, and providing a framework for future decisions. Just move past this. This is a community-driven process. It's engagement-heavy. We've got four phases of engagement. We are now in the third one. And within those, we're doing a variety of things. We've got online opportunities via What's Up Wheat Ridge in-person events, like we've had two open houses already. We'll have another one tomorrow evening at the Rec Center. Target intercept activities as well. Some of those have gone on. I think some of those are planned as well for the future coming up, if I'm not mistaken. The staff is going to lead those. The survey on What's Up Wheat Ridge for this round is very important. Everyone should note that it is open until Friday, October eleventh, at five. So normally how we work those is they begin before we show up and do this in any given week in our engagement rounds, and it extends beyond the end of our week as well. So that's open for a much longer time. That gives people a much broader opportunity to engage. Ella, is there anything you want to add on that? Okay. We've got a steering committee, eighteen folks. We're going to meet with them on Wednesday night. We meet with them once per round as well. Quick look at the timeline. We're kind of smack dab in the middle of the project. We end our timeline at March, but in reality, I think adoption is probably going to happen after that, and so we're, you know, really sitting right in the middle of the process I'm not going to linger too long here. I think the staff memo had a deep dive on the engagement that's happened to date in the project and all the numbers and all the things that happened within that. We have had good attendance at the in-person events at the Rec Center. We've had, you know, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and forty people for each one, and we've had good engagement on What's Up Wheat Ridge, three hundred, four hundred responses. So that's, in our experience, quite good. Where we've come from, like where we feel we are now, based on the first couple of rounds of engagement, is that we have a, we had an emergent consensus, that consensus feels fully emerged at this point in the community confirmation of core values, planning principles, and planning priorities. We've talked about this before. We've talked about these, I think, more at length when we met in small group setting back in June. And I believe this was in your packet, and so you've all seen this, but for the benefit of public, people who are watching at home or who might watch later, I'm going to share these numbers and say that, basically, at minimum, we have seventy percent agreement on our core values, our planning principles, and our priorities. And that's, that's pretty strong. So, two things. One, I think, kind of however we shaped these and got to them in the first place was a good process, and then, you know, we're certainly happy that the community embraced them. Anytime you can get agreement at that level, you're doing something right. I also want to point out, at this point, as we look at planning priorities, that category at the bottom there, and these are what we started out in our process, calling them the big things, and then they've turned into something more official sounding, like planning priorities. But those items, you will, I think, note particularly, particularly the first two, but also the third one, the pedestrian and bicycle facilities, that what we've seen of the draft thinking coming out of the Business Prosperity Plan, that this meshes pretty nicely with what's been going on there. And so there will be, we've been in conversation with Puma, the consultant on that project, and so we'll talk a bit about it tonight, about how we think those things are going together. But as time goes on and you see their draft work and you see our draft work, those connections should be pretty clear. It's our sense that at least both of those teams are on the same page. We're not going to spend a lot of time on this tonight, but we did talk about it in a small group setting back in June, and it's sort of a, something that hasn't got as much attention lately as we've worked on some of the other things that we're going to talk about here tonight. We're going to go back to it. It is going to be really important. The focus area selections between our team and the staff team, we did land on five areas to give a little bit of a deeper dive, a little bit more study, and also through those conversations fleshed out a bit more what we think they are and what their value can be in this process. And how we're going to use them is if you think about the comp plans who are being at this altitude, and then you have your sub-area plans, your most recent example being the Forty-Fourth Avenue Plan, it gives you a bit more direction than the comp plan. It's a lower altitude. What we're doing is sort of bracketing the sub-area plan, if you will. We're doing the comp plan, but at the same time, we want to get down to more ground level and do something that's a bit more implementation-focused and a bit more of like an example of, all right, what are the things that we're talking about in the city plan? What are some of the things that have been talked about in the Forty-Fourth Plan, for example, or other sub-area plans that need to be implemented and made real? What does that look like? What's that sort of last level of planning detail that helps people envision what it actually means? So we thought that was a neat opportunity, both to sort of get over the hump on a number of issues that have existed in the community for a long time, but also that have been raised in the, in the city plan process to date, and also in other processes, again, like the Business Prosperity Plan. We chose these areas because of a couple of reasons. You could argue all of them are important locations in the community, but also they are places where we have a number of common issues to look at and deal with and address. And across the top there, it's actually easier to read on that screen than it is on my piece of paper. Sorry for the small font. But this package of eight things that we're going to look at in the focus area plans, low-impact bike and pedestrian improvements. When we say low-impact, that means low-impact in a couple of different ways. One is where it may not require a lot of infrastructure changes, but rather sort of smaller, like example, paint. You might have some, some solutions that are paint-only. You're not moving a curb. You're not changing pavement, et cetera, et cetera. Not necessarily impacting traffic flows a whole lot. Also, they're not particularly expensive, so understanding that budgets are finite and just assuming there will always be big pots of money either from the taxpayers in Wheat Ridge or from elsewhere to pay for those things, you know, we can't make that assumption. Improved corridor image, that's been discussed at length. Private frontage zone improvements. There are times when there may be some outcomes we want from an aesthetic perspective that are, might normally be done in the public right-of-way. They can't be done in the public right-of-way because there isn't space, for example, and so how might we incentivize those on private property? That's an issue that we're going to look at. How infill and redevelopment happens, the nature of it, what it looks like, its character, that should be fairly obvious. Connecting residential areas to parks and trails, something we've heard a lot of in this process, is the importance of connections and getting me from where I live to the places that I want to go. That is not always, but it is often a park, or it's Clear Creek Trail, or something else that's a natural asset. Facilitating neighborhood-serving business, adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Again, so everything is not solved with a new building or new development, but making use of the building fabric that we have. And then finally, managing the transition between residential and commercial properties. And there's probably some, some improvements that could be made in that regard as, as things change in the community over time. So we've got five of those locations. They are probably places you all know, and we sort of feel that the Forty-Fourth section from Clear Creek to Independence is first among equals because it has the ability to check all of these boxes. We can look at a number of issues in one place, so this is probably going to get some, some special attention, I guess you'd say. All right, we're going to go now to the draft place type framework. This is, as I said, per the time allocations in the agenda. This is the big item of tonight, and this is essentially our approach to a future land use map. If you know Envision Wheat Ridge, there's something in there called the Structure Plan. It's essentially doing that same job. In a lot of comp plans, it's called the Future Land Use Map, or if you're a planning nerd, it's a flum. We don't like to use that in turban and polite company, but we aren't, we don't want to do things that way. We generally don't, and we don't think it works very well here in Wheat Ridge either. And so we've come to this place type framework approach that we like because it goes beyond land use. It incorporates land use, but it goes beyond land use to capture some things about character and the nature of these places that land use as a descriptor just wouldn't do. This is the categorization that we have here. We have four residential types of places, and we have five non-residential types of places. And I should say here, this is our proposal. This is the draft. So nothing here is set in stone. We are vetting this with the community as well. We're going to talk to Planning Commission about it as well in early October. So this is still open at this point. We feel pretty good about it, but we're here having a conversation because we're open to the feedback that we may not have gotten it totally right just yet. So whenever I say, you know, we, we are doing this, or we are doing that, or we have this or we have that, just know it's not that certain. So with four residential types, five non-resident, non-residential types, we will talk in a few minutes about why variety is the determinant here. It's a good question to ask, and I think the, the non-residential types are going to make a lot of sense to you. It's going to look and feel like what you know about Wheat Ridge, and again, it's going to mesh with what's been going on in the, in the Business Prosperity Plan. It's important to point out, I think, that there's two things you're going to, one thing you're going to notice for sure about these place types, I think, is that it looks like the Wheat Ridge that you all know. So you'll look at it and you'll say, you could be forgiven for saying, well, that just looks like how things are now. What's, what's future-oriented about this? But as we go forward, we will be talking about how they can become aspirational. So a lot of the vision work that we've done so far is revealing that there's not an appetite to create a totally different Wheat Ridge. It's more like, let's make the best version of Wheat Ridge that we can be. And a lot of that is based on who we already are and who we've been, understanding that there can be improvements and we can do things a little bit better. So there will be aspirational components to these place types as well. It's not that the maps that look like what you know about maps Wheat Ridge means we're going to keep everything the same. I'm going to try to go through each one of these relatively quickly, just because we don't have tons of time to, to linger, but this is our low-variety neighborhood place type. This is one of our residential types. What makes it low-variety is that it's dominated by a single housing type. It's not always the case that it will be single-unit detached, though that will often be the case. So for example, if you look out near Clear Creek Crossing on the very western edge of the city, that's also low-variety because it's all multifamily rental, right? So it's not, it doesn't have a lot, doesn't have a lot of variety, so that's why it's low-variety. And also, common era of construction is important determinant here as well, that goes into lower variety. We want to point out, by the way, that maybe it goes without saying, but I want to say it, is that just because everything's the same color, it doesn't mean it's the same place. It's a type of place. So you could take this yellow that you see here, and you could break it up into, you know, six or eight different sort of neighborhoods. Those neighborhoods would be places that would all share the low-variety place type, but they themselves would be their own places. That, that makes sense. If I say anything that doesn't make sense, Matt's going to turn his mic on and he's going to just say it, that it didn't make sense. This is our moderate variety neighborhood type, place type. It is generally less single-unit-detached heavy than the low-variety, but it's not dominated by a single housing type. So there's, again, a few different ways to find your part of the city in the moderate variety neighborhood. This is the highest variety neighborhood. It's got the widest variety of housing types, obviously, variety of eras, and really what tips a part of the city over into this category is the presence of twentieth-century rental properties. So you've got a lot of, as you all know, a lot of older rental properties scattered throughout the city in all kinds of places, which provides a lot of, that's your, your naturally occurring affordable housing, and it's important to your housing stocks, but it also does impact sort of the character of the neighborhood and helps set that character. I also want to take a break here and say, there are more lengthier descriptions of each one of these place types, and they are available on What's Up Wheat Ridge. They're part of that content that's there now. We also will be sharing that tomorrow at the open house. We didn't provide it to you in your packet. We're not going to go through it tonight because it's just, it's too, it's too much. It's too many words, but you can find it there, or you can come see it tomorrow, and if neither of those methods work for you, we'll just have, get it to you via Ella. Our last residential type here is the Transit Village, which is really basically the Ward TOD. It's the highest-density residential around a rail station. It's got integrated limited commercial uses, basically just confirming the plan that Wheat Ridge has long had for that area. If you put those all together, it looks like that.
So Eric, I don't know, do we want to take any questions or anything up to this point before we actually, or do we want to go through all of them?
I think we could do it either way. Yeah, I think it's up to you folks. I mean, if there's questions that you've had, I'd hate to, you know, get all the way to the end and then you forgot your question that you had six slides ago.
Call for questions.
Any questions regarding the place type concept or?
This is what confirms this is today. Ten years ago. Twenty years.
It's reflective, it is reflective of today, and what it will, I think it's also fair to say, some major percentage, I don't know if it's eighty percent or ninety-two percent or what it is, but of your housing stocks you have today, or what you're going to have in twenty years, what you're going to have in thirty years, most likely. So fundamentally, a lot of things are going to, I think, within this framework, you can feel confident that how we described it is how it will be into the future, certainly within the bright, the planning horizon of this document. That being said, it is our intent to put in some future-oriented pieces to this. So each one of these colors on these maps, when the, in the next phase of our work, we're going to build those out. It's going to be a real description of what is this kind of place? What does the future of this place look like? To make it work the best that it can be, what are some things that may have to be done, whether that's capital infrastructure, whether that's zoning reform, et cetera, et cetera? So that will be in there as well. Piece of today, and there's a piece of tomorrow.
Could use your mic. People online say they can't.
Yeah, so the, I guess the question then is, is this doesn't represent fences. It doesn't represent off-limits. It doesn't, you get where I'm going with that? That senses this is today, and it, it's a representative of where we are today, but it's not saying that just because an area is yellow or whatever.
That it couldn't change over time.
Exactly.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. We're going to talk about that a little bit in a minute. Okay. Keep moving on. So those are our residential types. Our five non-residential types are here. We'll go through these briefly. This is what we're calling the Main Street Mixed-Use District. This is essentially Thirty-Eighth between Sheridan and Lutheran, Lutheran site. And it's really sort of, you know, the Wheat Ridge downtown, if you will. It's the center of the community. It's got a lot of important community gathering places, civic uses. Shopping and dining are important activities, kind of a unique place. There's only really kind of one of them, and that is yours, your Wheat Ridge. Community Mixed-Use District, this is sort of a, oh, I think I skipped one. Yeah. Thank you. Neighborhood Mixed-Use District is the smallest-scale district that has really commercial uses in it, tends to be walkable, tends to be retail-oriented, and pedestrian access is prioritized. Parking is generally behind commercial or mixed-use buildings. So as you know, here's an example, I think, of the question that Dan just asked. If you look at those bullets on the left and you think about some of the places that are pink on this map, you know there's maybe a little bit of a mismatch. Say, well, that stretch of Forty-Fourth doesn't meet the description that, that you just read, and that could be true. So there may be some things in this place type, its, its future trajectory, what the city, the plan plans for and hopes for, and then make some changes in that regard.
One thing I'll add there, also Forty-Fourth is a good example, where we looked at the Forty-Fourth Plan to see what the recommendations were there and trying to forward some of those and have those reflected in our place types as well. So this is not just us and the city plan by itself, but it's also other planning documents cities done over the years as well.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Community Mixed-Use District, bit more, scale is bigger, got variable buildings in size, but generally larger than the neighborhood type. It's usually auto-oriented. This is the place where you start to see multi-unit residential come in as a use. This is regional mixed-use. This tends to be the north-south corridors, where you've got the most intense commercial uses, large-scale buildings. These regions, these market geographies are regional, so these are not just serving people in Wheat Ridge, but serving people all over the region who are passing through often. Campus-style employment centers, like Clear Creek Crossing, they're definitely auto, auto-oriented and often have multi-unit residential. This is the General Production Center type. This is sort of the nuts-and-bolts economic places, I guess you might say. Industrial spaces where fabrication, processing, manufacturing, shipping, warehousing, those all happen in this General Production Center type. I know this is also, again, a point of emphasis in the Business Prosperity Plan, and so this, this place type is talking to that analysis and that work as well. This is what those look like altogether, and when we put it all together, this is what it looks like. So there are a few things we want to point out about this approach. I'm not sure it exactly shows up in our map here, the way that everything exports from Adobe Illustrator and then gets onto a PowerPoint slide and then ends up as a PDF, but the reality of these, if you were to zoom in and look at them closely, is that there's a lot of overlap. So these shapes and colors, they overlap with each other. The boundaries are fuzzy. It's not always exactly clear where one ends and another begins, and that's simply the reality of how things play out on the ground. I mean, there are these places where you're not exactly sure, am I, am I like on a corridor? Am I in a residential neighborhood? Am I in a place that is really neither or is both? And those are areas for conflict when it comes to development if they're not handled thoughtfully. The second point is that different residential areas, as we talk through our low, our moderate, and our variety, our low, moderate, high variety categories, different residential areas have different levels of housing variety, and that means that new housing fits differently in different kinds of places. So residential neighborhood is not just a residential neighborhood. There are different types, and that means that the way that something new has to fit into the established neighborhood may be different based on where it is. I think what we're saying is sort of painfully obvious, but it's worth pointing out because it will be an underpinning of how we talk about this going forward. And as Ella pointed out at the top of the conversation, and maybe again, Dan to your question, this plan assumes that community change is inevitable. There's, development is going to happen in Wheat Ridge. It's going to continue to happen, you know, for a very long time, forever, most likely. Things will not stay the same, whether we want them to stay the same or not. And so the question is not really, are we going to have something new? Are we not going to have something new? Are we going to allow development? Are we going to ban development? Development's going to happen. What we really need to figure out is how are we going to get it to mesh as well as we can within the existing established residential areas? So that's where this phrase peaceful coexistence comes from, which I don't think is our phrase. I'm not sure, maybe Lauren coined that. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's a great term. One thing I will also add, just in terms of, and Eric pointed this out, but I want to reiterate, the reason why we went to place types is because of that, because place types you can get to more than just land use. You can get to the era of the built, the built environment. You can get to style. You can get to location of parking. You can get to infrastr, other infrastructure. You can get to whether it's bike and pedestrian-friendly, all of those other things that were just a future land use map, you can't get to those. So as Wheat Ridge kind of changes over time, being able to maintain and, and, you know, and we heard it loud and clear through the engagement process, that Wheat Ridge is a place of places, and they want to maintain that character. So even though you have change, you can maintain some of that character by, by paying attention to other things other than just land use. So that style, those location of parking, how the frontages are created or treated, all of those other types of things that we can talk about in place types that you really can't in land use. And ultimately, you can begin to codify and also regulate as well.
Yeah, that's all right. And also, land use can be unnecessarily constraining. You can be having the wrong conversation if you say, well, this use doesn't, on our map, land use is X, and you're saying Y. An issue may not be that their land use is incompatible. It may be that there are other things about them that you need to manage. It could be the setback. It could be the height. It could be the landscaping. It could be a number of things where the land uses could actually exist in the same place if you account for them properly.
Can I just give one quick example? So single-unit homes, bulk plane is a really good example of, like, it wasn't a land use issue. We had neighborhoods with single-unit homes and duplexes next to each other. The issue was the building form itself. So we're trying to capture that feedback on character more, in a more nuanced way than our prior comp plan did.
One of the things we think is going to be really important in the city plan is to give instructions to future regulations. So often, and Matt and I were just having a conversation about another project before this meeting started, and the coding, the firm that's doing the development code was saying, we're glad you guys put these, this information in the city, in their comprehensive plan, because when they went to update the land use regulations and zoning code, they kind of knew. they kind of knew what the intent was. And very often what you'll get is high level comprehensive plans that are quite vague about what they, those plans intend. And then when you go to update the regulations, you're left kind of scratching your head or sometimes having to redo an engagement process to get the community input and feedback that you need in order to move that particular process forward. So we don't want the city plan to leave the city of Wheat Ridge in that situation if we can avoid it. So getting those instructions into the city plan for these place types, we think is going to be important. And in particular in two areas, the transition between different types of places. So between these place types where those, those transition areas, those fuzzy boundaries overlap. And then also between, within the place types, how do you treat the transitions between individual properties? So is there a set of kind of recommended rules that can go in the place types inside the city plan that says, when this type of property or type of new development goes next to this type of existing residential property, it should be thought about this way. It should adhere to these rules. And if we can do that, that doesn't make it your zoning code. You still have to do your zoning code. But if we can give that kind of clarity, we think that'll be helpful down the line. So the questions we have, based on everything we've just shared, is number one, are these the right place types in your view? Two, are the geographies accurate? We can flip around in these maps as much as you'd like. And then three, what are the most common issues that you see that could be better managed to achieve that peaceful coexistence between new development and established residential neighborhoods? We're interested to hear council's views on that and the kinds of, you get public comment, you know, weekly. You hear from folks on these land use decisions, zone changes, et cetera. And so we'd like to hear a little bit about that. We're going to be, part of this engagement round is also asking the same question of the public. So we'll have that information and feedback as well.
Councilor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one quick question. So looking at this, I mean, it's not a blank slate. There are definitely some uses that are compatible with what you have. If you, if you, have you done analysis? If you took away generally the areas that are already compatible to those faded back, you know, say, say the, the single unit houses that are yellow, if they already, that's already exists, if that went away, what does that map start to look like?
Not sure of falling stuff.
So I guess the way I could look at this from two different lenses is one is, if this was a blank slate, this would be our, kind of our ultimate picture of what we want the city to be, what you painted right now. This is our ideal.
This is, this is largely what exists now and what we expect largely will exist in the future. We absolutely did not have, did not start with a blank slate anywhere.
Right.
Because for practical purposes, what we think, well practically speaking, everything's not going to change, you know, period, in any short amount of time. But also because the, the work that we've done on the engagement side shows that there's not a huge dramatic desire to create a radically different Wheat Ridge. Again, that might seem obvious, but if you think about Wheat Ridge's position in this market, you think about the value of the land where you're sitting. If the community said, yeah, we really want this place to be different, you could do it. There are many places in America where we work where they could say, we want to be different. And we could say, well, good luck with that because you don't have the, there's no capacity, there's no market capacity to make that happen. That's not the case in Wheat Ridge. So when you say, we're actually going to start from a place of mostly being who we are, but being a better version of who we are, that's, that's not an unimportant, unimportant statement. Sorry, I didn't mean to take up track.
And I'm not sure if this is exactly what you're asking, but the lower variety residential place type, for example, is actually, I think, where we have the hardest time in some cases managing change. So it's where our schools are, it's where our churches are. And if we're going to have likely some land use change on institutional land uses in areas that have lower variety and have less change, it's all the more important that we have a toolkit that helps us do that thoughtfully so that we can have peaceful coexistence with inevitable change in a lower variety area. Which is why we headed in this direction in terms of place types and goals.
So to reiterate, this shows the current and the future.
Yes.
At the same time.
Yeah, that's what we think. Yes.
Okay.
That's intense.
Thank you. Councilor Hultein.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys. Exciting to see. I've got a couple reflections and then a question. I mean, this just really reminds me when we were doing the NRS and there was a year-long conversation about how do we, how do we distinguish between envisioning corridors and preserving neighborhoods from a resident, like the perspective of residents, right? Like we're driving change on corridors where we really need to see the economic development, but want to give some reassurance to community members who bought into a neighborhood that that neighborhood isn't going to fundamentally change quickly under their tenure. And I think what's been presented here, this movement sort of from used to character, really is, I think, an extraordinary framework for us, you know, at the dais to be able to engage in that conversation, to say, we're recognizing the character and the quality of life that people have invested into, into the community. And we really want to, you know, daylight, you know, the possibilities and the things that we want to attract. So I think this really helps us because in my tenure here, there have been, I would say, a lot of energetic discussions and, you know, all the way to the ballot about, you know, how do we look at the comp plan, which I think was very vague and a lot of interpretations in these gray zones. It almost, what I wrote down here is this is like quantum planning. It's, it's like this planning allows, allows it to be what it needs to be at the time that it needs to be that. And it allows us to take this framework and recognize that fundamentally there are Wheat Ridge-y things we don't want to lose because they're what makes us Wheat Ridge. And I think in all your planning in the last five or six years with us, six years? Five years, six years? Six years. Um, I mean, Wheat Ridge is like pretty adamant about staying Wheat Ridge. And so I just, I really want to recognize just the thoughtful, thoughtful work. And as somebody who loves this stuff, this framework is just exciting to me because it just, it captures, like it captures, I think, how people see where they are. There's some nitpicky things in it that I would probably, like, I'd like to, like, bring up, but I just really want to acknowledge this framework, I think is exactly what we need and is going to be really service-like, short and long term. Can you go back to the corridor definitions? I want to see, I want to just drill down a little bit on the difference between the Main Street and the community corridor definitions.
The, I think the main difference here is development intensity, I would say. And I think, I'm not going to say that because I might be wrong if I say that. But essentially development intensity. And if you look at, there's a spectrum or hierarchy there that the neighborhood mixed use is going to be. It doesn't mean every neighborhood mixed use place is the same as another. It doesn't mean every community mixed use place is the same as another. But if you start to sort them by size of parcel, size of building, auto orientation, et cetera, it should generally move from neighborhood up to regional. Does that make sense?
Yeah. What I want to, if we could just take a look really quickly at how you define Main Street and then how you defined neighborhood mixed use.
Mm-hmm. But that distinction in particular, neighborhood versus, okay.
Yeah.
Because 38th is, I mean, in our view, I think in the community's view, it's certainly in our view.
Can we just pull it up on the screen so we can look at it?
Which one do you want to look at?
Uh, the Main Street. Thanks. Okay, cool. Right. Now I'm, now I'm listening now.
All right. That, part of what makes it, Main Street mixed use is that it's special, unique. There's really only one of them. It doesn't exist in multiple places. So in our view, within this typology, 38th is sort of different and special. The other thing is that if you look, for example, at, we tend, we are thinking about 38th, that stretch of 38th, so let's, let's define it. Whenever someone says 38th, they may have their own idea of, well, where 38th starts and stops. And we're talking about from Sheridan over to Lutheran. And we think of that while it's definitely has a lot of variety going on if you go from one end to the other end. And you might say, well, that doesn't feel like one place. Could definitely argue that. Absolutely. Could argue that in good faith. But we think that that sort of spine as the community center with a lot of things going on in it and also with it being a planning priority, it's come up through this process. And in particular, I think Lutheran to Harlan, but let's just treat it all as one for this purpose of this conversation, that the variety of things going on in there, the importance of that corridor as its own corridor, not as sharing a type or a categorization with any, any others, is fairly critical, especially when you consider what Lutheran is likely to become. When you think about the importance of the 38th intersection with Wadsworth, you know, that's, again, just, there are a lot of places where you have a, a regional, what do we call it here? Sorry. A regional mixed use district corridor and you get a community mix, you know, crossing. So 44th and Wad's, 38th and Wad's, but they are not necessarily the same. It's like that particular intersection has a particularly important role as the middle of the community in our view. And so that in combination with the, with the 2011 plan called the, I think called the Main Street District and then adding Lutheran over on the, on the western edge, we think is just really important. Matt, is there anything else that you can say about that?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the distinguishing differences between those is also, I think, auto ran versus heading more towards walkable, bikeable. But I think 38th is just more compact and it feels more walkable and bikeable than most of the community mixed use areas that we have. Go to the next slide there, Eric. You want to see all of them together or? Right, just the commercial or the community right there.
Can we go to the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Actually.
And there's certainly pockets, I think, in areas.
Can you go to the neighborhood one, actually? The one that's right between community and Main Street.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and again, I think this is also probably on that walkable kind of scale as well and probably even, even more compact, especially when you think of 29 than, than 38. So some of it is, is scale, I think, as well. Building size, block size, just the overall fabric. And then I think also the walkability versus what tends to be currently more auto oriented. Now, that's not to say that, you know, as we pointed out, it's kind of, it's one map right now. It's kind of existing and future. That's not to say that there could be certain areas that the community or the council decides that we want to take in a different direction than what currently is. And that certainly could be reflected in place types.
So.
But you're right. I think there's nuance there that is very fine when you go between the neighborhood, the Main Street and the community. And I think a lot of it's scale.
Yeah, so the reason I'm asking is, I mean, we've struggled as long as I've been involved in 38th Avenue, calling it downtown, calling it Main Street, right? Like, I've always thought like what we're trying to accomplish there is a Main Street project, but we've been inconsistent in terms of how we refer to it. And if you go to the Main Street District definition, I would make an argument that 44th Avenue from Clear Creek to Kipling actually meets that definition. And so I want to just, you know, put forth, so if we could go to the Main Street definition slide, if that's possible. Sorry to keep asking for that. It actually has all of those criteria. And so because we've identified 38th Avenue as one of our big things and it's already like really highlighted strongly as something that's going to get a lot of attention, I'd like to actually propose that we consider 44th from Clear Creek to Kipling to also be a Main Street or to consolidate Main Street and residential into the same thing. Because I just, I look at this and 44th from Clear Creek to Kipling actually meets that criteria.
This is really helpful. We had the similar discussion in the planning division meeting and we struggled to see the maps. One thing I will say is we'll send you this map series so you can redline each of these categories. It's been helpful for our team to see one color at a time and be like, that feels like it's missing. 32nd and Wad's on the light pink or something like that. I think from, and there is no right answer here, so exactly why we're asking because these are draft maps. One of the things that our team had brought up is means the 38th designation feels contiguous. The light pink neighborhood feels like they could be pockets throughout the city of different sizes. And then to your point on 44th, as we look back at that sub area plan, it really did try to tease out different districts, more intensive on Kipling, more intensive sort of on the western boundary and less intensive in the middle. So we tried to honor that nuance that had come up from the, from the 44th sub area plan. So they're not, it's, it's tricky because there are definitely similarities across place types and similarities we want to see on some of the corridors. And this is exactly why understanding different perspectives on these map blobs is going to be really helpful for us to sort of create the right tools for those different place types. And there may be tools in, in multiple place types, right? So it doesn't, they're not mutually exclusive. And, and this is exactly the kind of conversation we were hoping to get tonight.
Cool. Thank you.
We could also maybe say, sorry, Mayor, briefly, that I think as we build these out in their instruction set within the plan, it's, I would not assume right now, for example, that the mixed use Main Street District, if it's, were to say as, as it is, would get a special set of instructions or have a different kind of vision than might a community mixed use district. It might be essentially the same treatment, same prescription, if you will, in a lot of ways. But with that, so that, that wouldn't make it, that wouldn't have a distinction. That wouldn't have a difference in terms of what it was trying to get to and its ultimate quality. It may be very much the same.
Thank you. I have Councilor Larson and then after Councilor Larson, Councilor Weaver on line.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, every time I try to poke a hole in the map, it's like, no, I can't. I have to compliment you guys on, on, on thinking of this stuff ahead of time. And it, I, again, I agree with 99% of the stuff that's on here. The question I have is within some of the particularly residential areas is where this term, this Cold War term, peaceful coexistence, is going to come into play. We've seen it, we've seen it many times and we will continue to see it where a, the market has an interest in developing property in either an ag or a industrial site and whether it's a single family townhomes, multifamily, they're, I, I guess I'm asking how or if it's even possible to anticipate the opposition that will appear. And when a, the market says, we, we ought to put a townhouse development here in an A1 zoned area and every single one of the neighbors within four or five blocks is going to object. You can anticipate that, but I don't know how you can address it.
That is what we are hoping people will share with us in this phase exactly. And so the activity we have planned for tomorrow is, there's two sort of, what are it, case studies? Do you want to call them? Do you want to describe it? I mean, we're trying to elicit those emotions now because now is the time to share that. I get twitchy about height, I get twitchy about setbacks, I get twitchy about patios on roofs. If we don't know that, we can't refine the zoning. I've said this to you all before, I've said this to the team. Like, we created rules to invite development to Wheat Ridge over the last 20 years and it has come and we now have the luxury of refining those rules to achieve the development we more precisely want to see. So I have to know in this phase what drives people crazy so that we can document the toolkit we need to sort of drive people less crazy when change inevitably comes over the next 10 to 20 years. You can maybe share a little more detail on the specific case studies or that activity. We want all that feedback now, the good, the bad and the ugly.
I think what you've also all experienced is that by the time it comes to a rezoning, you're, you're set, or you're stuck arguing about the rules that exist. And I think, I know as planners, we often feel like the right rules aren't quite there yet. So we're trying to address both the situation that you talked about where there's, you know, some, some site that's agricultural or maybe it's a big, maybe it's a school or a church. It's going to be, the developer wants to do townhomes, for example. Then, so that's kind of one scenario that we're asking people about. We're also, also asking them about the scenario. I think another situation we hear is that people really want those neighborhood serving businesses. But when we get proposals for businesses near neighborhoods, they often don't go over well. And we've got a great. And we've got a great, you know, all of our public hearings, there are a lot of times to talk about what people like and don't like, but we don't get to set the right rules. So we're trying to ask people, when, when we have new development, new residential development or new commercial development that's occurring near or in existing neighborhoods, what would you want to have regulated that would make you more comfortable with it? So we're trying to have this be the arena where we can say, okay, we know you don't like height, how tall is too tall? How, you know, okay, you're worried about a taller building looking into your garden or, you know, have a good example of, you know, shading your tomato beds. So what, how tall is too tall? How far back is going to make tall okay? So we're, we're really hoping that people will roll up their sleeves and dive into the details with us to, to give us those details and ask, you know, just ask like, help us make these rules better so that when we do get the developments that you're otherwise excited about or maybe not, but it's just in the inevitable change that cities see, that we want to have the right toolkit to manage that. So hopefully tomorrow we'll start to see, we'll start to get some texture to figure out what the right toolbox is to do exactly that.
This is not a brilliant insight that we had. I mean, you're, you have a good planning staff here, that they do good work in this regard. I mean, Lauren doesn't know this, but I go around America citing the bulk plan work that you've done here to other places and how great that is. It's just what we're trying to do is get, take the conversations here, the issues here and take from the things that have worked well, that we know have worked well, and then advance the city plan so that it speaks to that as well. You know, you guys have to work with a comp plan that's from 2009 and you can build the tools in the code over time and update those and upgrade those to solve the challenges that you're facing. But this is just part of that process is, you know, the next step is get the comp plan where you need it to be and then after that, continue to refine the tools. And the reason you can refine the tools is because you have the policy basis in the comp plan.
Thank you. I have Councilor Weaver and then Councilor Stites on deck.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Could we move to one of the, the last maps that was presented that had everything on it? It was like the, the supreme pizza. There we go. Thank you. I just wanted to comment, I really appreciate how you described, I'm not sure if I'm going to say it correctly, but the way we have a conscious choice to try and stay with the, be a place of places, I'm not quite sure how you described it, but I thought it was really good. One of the things in this, this, I don't really want to see, say Main Street development, but I do want to acknowledge, and I, and I'm speaking of District 3 right now, but it does seem like there might be a few other places. I'm, I'm sitting here at my house, which is on 38th, and it is constant, you know, since I've lived here for 15 years, there is now a constant stream of cars starting at about 6 o'clock in the morning all the way until, well, it's 7, 7:20 and there's still a constant stream of cars. And, and I, I would, in light of recognizing the geographies and understanding that, that I happen to live in the higher variety neighborhood part of District 3 and the rest of it tends to be lower variety neighborhood, and I know that change is coming for 38th Avenue on our side. What I'd also like this geography to, or these geographies to recognize is that we have these corridors, whether we like it or not, that people use. And, you know, now since we have a Chick-fil-A at the corner of Young Field, it is, there's even more traffic coming down 38th. And I'm not, I'm not upset about the traffic. I know some of my neighbors are upset about the traffic, but that to me is a reality that if we want these things, then we have to accept that there's going to be traffic coming down 38th. I'd like to recognize this part of 38th as a corridor. I'm not, I don't want to say a Main Street corridor or anything like that, but I do want to have room in our definitions for the fact that people use 44th, 32nd and 38th to get across, across Wheat Ridge. And they use it if the, if the highway is backed up and they use it because they think it's a cut through and it doesn't matter if we have traffic circles and sidewalks and all of those great things, they're still going to use it. And I, I feel like we should acknowledge, I feel like we can't deal with that issue unless we acknowledge that it's truly a corridor. Does that make sense? I, I just, I would, I would like to be a little bit more inclusive about how people are already using our city with increased volume of traffic because of all the good things we have here, including more housing and people.
I think that might be a, if you just hold for one second, if we've got any more comments on, on the place types, because we're going to the mobility framework next and that might be a.
Okay, then we'll put that one on hold for Councilor Weaver and we'll go to a Councilor Stites. And Councilor Weaver, if you'll put down your hand and we'll see you the next time it comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I really, I agree with everything that you guys have done as far as this, this map goes. I, I understand where Councilor Holtein is coming from as far as the, you know, the Main Street on 44th, but I do think that, as Eric said, you can accomplish a lot of the same things with the different definition. And I, I agree that that section of 38th is different than any other section in Wheat Ridge. That's, that's something that we've either carved out or has carved itself out over time. And, and I think that a lot of this stuff is, you know, it's not maybe what we would do if we could clear the board and, and reset it up, but it is the best we're going to do with what we have, given that I don't think our residents and I, you know, I feel like Councilor Holtein and I were on the steering committee for the NRS back in, what, 18? 17, 18, 18, 19, whatever it was. There wasn't a lot of appetite for big changes. There was nibbles, there's, you know, making the puzzle pieces fit together more smoothly, but there's not a big appetite for, for let's, you know, let's, let's bulldoze what we have and, and get rid of the small bungalows and, and build high-rise apartments. You know, I think we're going to find out pretty soon that there's not a big appetite for a lot of that stuff. So we just got to make sure that, I think what we need to do is, is continue to develop our strengths, which, you know, being a place of places, I think is good. The peaceful coexistence thing, I think is, you know, it's fair because I think our residents, especially our longer-term residents, will tolerate so much when they see what they're getting for what their, their, their pain is, right? So we just have to make sure that the pain doesn't outweigh the, the benefit. So I think that this does that very well. So I, and I think that making sure that our neighborhoods are protected in a way that, you know, as Lauren said, the biggest changes are going to come from the two schools that are gone. And, you know, as I drive through District 3, there's four or five churches that sit empty even on Sundays now, which terrifies the neighborhood around them. You know, they envision high-rises and, and townhomes and, and these are single-family homes next to it. So, you know, making sure that, and I think this started with the NRS, you know, back in, in 18, that the neighborhood as it develops should develop as it currently exists. And so single-family homes should be developing near single-family homes or duplexes or things like that. So I think if this kind of starts to continue to work that, I think that, and it seems like it is, that all makes sense. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have down, so continue on with your presentation.
Before we move on from the place-type framework, I do just want to follow up on what Lauren said. I will send out, I know that the, the version we're showing you tonight has a little more detail than what you got in your packet. There's even more than that. It's on Wheat Ridge Speaks, but it's, there's a, a version that I have that's formatted a little more easily than what we could do on the website. So I will follow up with the version we have tonight and the really deep dive. We do welcome redlines from you. So I'll share it to you, I'll let you know when we need to know your thoughts by to incorporate it in the next stage. But yes, we've been very careful to communicate this as draft because we took our first stab at it, but it's, we need to hear from the community on if we got it right. So I will, I will follow up with that. So if other things pop into your head, you'll have an opportunity to weigh in and that, that will be the email that you get from me. I'll probably wait until after tomorrow evening so I can also give a just quick initial report out on how the discussions are going on those ones as well. So I think by the end of the week, you could expect that from me.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move on from the, the place-type framework to another framework that we've developed based on what we've heard in the first two engagements. We're calling it the Mobility Framework. We heard it loud and clear early on and we heard it often, that people in Wheat Ridge want to be able to move through the, the city, throughout the city, not solely dependent on the automobile. This is not surprising, this is happening really all over the country. People are walking and biking more than ever before and it's, it's really great to see. So it creates some challenges, especially with, with communities that were, you know, kind of developed around the rural vernacular and then slowly suburbanized. Sometimes you don't have the right-of-way widths and you have high infrastructure costs to really kind of change, significantly change things, but I think there are ways that we can better connect and we're going to build off from, and this is not going to replace, the 2017 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. That was actually a very good plan, very comprehensive. So this is intended to build off from that in a way that is a little bit more strategic. So this Mobility Framework envisions how the existing network and really celebrating the, the assets that you currently have can be incrementally improved to help meet the community goals. So what this basically starts with is a framework around corridor types. And I think this hopefully will answer Councilmember Weaver's question about 38th being a corridor because we also see it as a corridor. And I, I think you also will probably see some similarities or some consistency, as Eric mentioned earlier, with the Business Prosperity Plan and some of the work that they're talking about in regards to corridors. So when we think about corridors, they serve different functions and one of the things that's hard to do is that they also are embedded within the place types. So, you know, when we think about a Main Street, for instance, you know, Main Streets are usually more compact, not only from a land use and building and structure standpoint, but also from the physical infrastructure, the roadway itself as well. So that also played a role in some of these corridors, just traffic volumes, things like that, that also play a different role. So when we look at the legend down in the lower left-hand corner, we have regional corridors and this is probably no surprise to you, the Kipling Street, really the north-south major corridors, Wadsworth as well as Youngsfield, and then also the northern portion of, of Ward as well, looking at as regional corridors. These are corridors that serve a population that's much larger than Wheat Ridge, carries high volumes of traffic, sometimes 30, 40,000 cars a day. And they have a, really a land use mix that is, you see on a national scale, a lot of national chains and things like that, which makes sense because parcels tend to be much larger, some, some more higher density multi-unit residential as well on those corridors. And then we also have the community corridors and these are the two east-west corridors of 44th and 38th Avenue and then also Clear Creek Drive, which is relatively new, but also takes that down from the high-volume corridors that you have with the regional corridors to more modest traffic volumes. The land uses aren't quite as intense along those. And again, the scale comes down a little bit because, and it, and it makes sense when you think about land use driving traffic volumes. When you have a regional corridor like Kipling, you're certainly going to have, you know, bringing a lot of people in and through the city that maybe live outside the city and also a lot of those national land use recognizable chains and things like that that people go to. And then the next level down is the district corridor, these are the green corridors. These are the corridors that begin to connect the regional and the community corridors together. You know, 29th, 32nd, these green corridors that are identified here on the map. And again, more compact, a little bit more walkable, less intense certainly than, than the district or the community and the regional corridors. So we have the three types of major corridors. We also recognize the neighborhood streets that certainly accommodate bikes and peds as well and all modes of travel. And then I think recognizing that as you come down, you know, from the regional is, you still want to make sure you accommodate bikes and peds, but it's probably not going to be as balanced as the community corridors and then certainly not as balanced as the, the district corridors. And then when you get down to the, the neighborhood street where everything is slowed down, where traffic volumes are very low, you get a lot of those streets that are actually shared by all modes of travel. But one of the fundamental pieces of this Mobility Framework beyond the corridor types is creating this low-stress bike corridors and building off some of the existing infrastructure that you currently have. First and foremost, Clear Creek Trail is certainly a wonderful, not only recreational trail, but it's certainly just mobility transportation-wise to be able to get around east and west through the city. And then you have some, you know, traffic calming and other bike facilities on corridors like Ward, like Pierce, like 32nd. So how do we begin to leverage these corridors into this low-stress network? And that's identified there as that purple highlight there. And then within connecting different neighborhoods to this low-stress corridors are these neighborhood bike connectors, which are really what we refer to often as bicycle boulevards. These can be shared streets that could be marked and signed, they could have themes, there's a lot of different ways that cities have done it. But these are low-stress areas that really begin to connect neighborhoods to these other low-stress corridors. And then with the focus corridor enhancements, these are areas that we would anticipate additional attention paid to bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, crossings, things like that. We have enhanced intersection crossings identified by the, the dash circles. And then we also have the parks and the bus stops and the schools called out as well. So the idea is here is to be able to think about low-cost incremental improvements over time, building off existing networks and recognizing that we have different corridor types that serve different purposes.
I just want to add also that, that a lot of these things, the city's already ahead of us in our thinking and planning work because a lot of the 2J projects are kind of already sitting in this map in some way, shape or form, but there will always be more to do. And so if you think about this as 2J will enhance the network already and then this Mobility Framework and the things that flow from this will kind of be like, all right, what are the gaps? What's left? What more is there to do? So just know that that's part of it as well.
So I think unlike the place-type framework, this is a little bit more forward-thinking, recognizing that certainly some of the infrastructure you already have in place, but then how can we enhance that moving forward? So we have the Mobility Map and then we also have what we've referred to as the Complete Streets Toolkit. There's a lot of different tools in the toolbox to accommodate different modes of travel from pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users, as well as motorists. And we identified those tools that could be applicable to each of the corridor types and then recognizing that context matters. These tools, there's a lot of, I think, transportation engineering, behind-the-scenes stuff that has to be considered for these different types of tools. And then what it does is this Tools Kit approach allows the city to pick and choose what the tools are the best fit for the context for each of these two, or each of these four corridors, recognizing that, you know, sometimes it's, it's driven by right-of-way width, sometimes it's driven by traffic volumes, adjacent land uses or a combination of. So with that, so are there any items missing from this framework in terms of, we'd love to get your input. We also have an exercise at the, at the Community Open House tomorrow evening that not only explains this in posters, but also gives the opportunity for folks to take the network and actually draw on the network based on the mode, whether they're going to be walking, biking or driving, and they can actually map it out and see how the network will work. And then it also will help identify gaps that maybe we've missed or that are important to folks as well. So we're going to be asking similar questions, as Eric mentioned, with the place-type framework to the public as well. mentioned, with the place-type framework to the public as well. So, any questions, comments, suggestions?
We'll start with Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. So a couple of things on here, I'm aiming to keep it high level. One thing that, and this is just, I mean, I'm a micro-expert in the neighborhood I live in, even though I represent a district in a city, the little gray ovals that kind of show the enhanced bike-ped investments that are kind of throughout the map.
Oh, the focus corridor enhancements.
Yeah. So we have just built beautiful multi-use trails on Wadsworth Boulevard, and we've got the identified Clear Creek Trail as a prime place to ride your bike. 44th Avenue is not a great connection between the two, and is, I think, a really important connection. So I'd like to, I'd like us to contemplate one of those gray ovals from Wadsworth to the Clear Creek Trail. And those neighborhoods on the other side of Wadsworth along there are really park deserts. And so accessing Anderson Park and the Clear Creek Trail from those neighborhoods is really important. And what we have now is the condition, and I just had a constituent stop by my house yesterday to talk to me about this, is we're forcing bikes and peds onto the sidewalk, and it's a narrow sidewalk, and it's not pleasant when you've got e-bikes and strollers. And so I would just like to highlight, we have two significant bike-ped things, and we're not connecting them. And that connector piece, I think, is really important. Because ultimately, this is only as successful as the grid, the network piece of it. So I think that's a critical point of the network. And then another point that I've made before, especially when we were talking about 38th West of Kipling project that's currently in process, on your matrix of what are allowable treatments for the different contexts, right now for community corridors, we have multi-use path as an option. And I really advocate for our community corridors, that we really try and not have the multi-use trails, because that's where you're going to get e-bikes and kids in the same right-of-way, and you're going to have a lot of, you know, dogs on leashes, a lot of conflict. So I would, if I were to redline it, I would suggest we don't consider multi-use paths for community corridors. They are absolutely, I think, a great option for a regional corridor like Wadsworth or Kipling, where we don't want to be putting bikes and peds in the same right-of-way as cars traveling 40, 45 miles an hour. But in our, in our community corridors, we really want to separate those uses, so it's safer, honestly, for pedestrians. So those are my two things. But otherwise, it's really nice to see this. I think this is really the first time I've seen a comprehensive, how are you getting around the city. Awkwardly, I will point out, it doesn't really contemplate how we're trying to move cars through our city in a way that we have a grid problem. Newsflash, we have a grid problem in Wheat Ridge, especially west of Wadsworth. And so our, you know, our neighbors to the east, and even really the eastern third of our community benefits from a grid where you've got a hierarchy of travel that people naturally will want to get to a slightly more traffic-oriented road. We have, like, a forced-constrained hierarchy west of Wadsworth, where cars are really forced to, Councilmember Weaver's point, you have to travel. 38th is the option. There are no other options to travel. So we have these forced roads and forced right-aways. And so to the extent that we're able to not consider a low-stress road, one of those forced-cut-through streets, I think is really important in our community, because we just, we have a grid problem, and that shows up on the street. So I think they're fairly easy to identify, but I think that's definitely something to consider, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you. Can you hear me again?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Just coming back to what I mentioned before, the reason I, I'm sorry I brought it up in the placeness conversation, but to me, it's really connected to our placeness. And I really appreciated what Councilor Hulteen just said. Because while, while we can create these corridors, people coming off I-70 are using all of these corridors in the same way. They're not, you know, necessarily going to 32nd versus 38th. And I think I just would like us to acknowledge that more often, if that makes sense, because we do have a massive grid problem. Because you can't, you know, the only two places you can cross, Clear Creek, are at Kipling and then at Youngfield, unless you're on a bike or walking. And so, you know, I don't have a solution to this, but I wish in the conversation of placeness, we could acknowledge some of these, these traffic realities. Because even if people are on bikes, we still just have a lot of auto-oriented stuff, at least on 38th, coming off of the shopping center that's on Youngfield. And so it's like this really, really abrupt change of use that people are using through a cut-through. So really, I just, I really appreciate this map, and it's really nice to see it all set up this way. I don't think we're necessarily acknowledging the true use of it, even as we recreate it and make it better. And I just, I just want us to be realistic at how much traffic is coming through all of the, whether we call it a community corridor or whether we call it a regional corridor. Thanks.
Maybe I could add here, appreciate those comments. It's maybe not clear at this point, and maybe it's not clear because we haven't done all the thinking on it yet. But, for example, if we go back to the place-types map, I think this is what Amanda was getting at. If we look at 38th, and 38th moving especially west of Kipling, mostly through low-variety residential, and that may be a corridor that we categorize similarly to 44th, for example, but the context is totally different, and the land uses are totally different, and you've got, it's true, parts of 44th as well. I'm talking specifically for 44th about the western end of it. But if you look at a corridor that runs through a place that is less low-variety residential, it's going to operate differently, it's going to feel differently, it's going to feel like maybe it's okay to have X number of cars on that corridor, where it wouldn't feel right to have the same number of cars on corridor that's categorized similarly, but for which the context is different, right? So we have some thinking to do about that, and about how the, these place types and the mobility framework and the corridor categorization, and then the toolkit, the mobility toolkit, how that kind of all fits together. And it is, the whole thing is sort of a planning kit of parts. You wouldn't put it together exactly the same way on that part of 38th as you would on corresponding part of 44th, you know, just north there, nor on the part of 44th that was on the eastern end of the city. So this conversation is good, because it helps us think through what are the needs in this plan. It's not written yet. We still have to write it. These things need to come together. And so as we think about these different combinations of these pieces and how they can go together for these place-type descriptions, this is really helpful. So thank you.
I very much appreciate that. May I make one more comment?
Yes, yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. I think you are picking up on what I'm trying to describe here. I just, I'm really, I was really struck by what you described about the place-making and how we identify ourselves. And I know that a lot of people in District 3 do not identify themselves as living in a high-traffic corridor. You know, they don't want to live in a high-traffic corridor, nor does anyone. But we all do in Wheat Ridge, because we all have these connectors through here. And so I think part of this is, while I realize you can't necessarily put this all on the same map and have it make any sense, I just want to make sure that as we're talking about placeness, we're also in the same breath saying, yeah, and we have a large volume that we have to think about that's going down 38th between Kipling and Youngfield. I don't know if that makes any sense, but I think we're getting there, and I really appreciate you acknowledging that.
Thank you. Let's see, I've got Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question and then a comment. So for tomorrow night, this toolkit, how, I know you gave us a little preview of what folks will be able to do in talking, putting themselves in a position of riding, walking, taking the bus, and how they're getting around. This, these items, I feel like folks have already gotten to have input, is that correct, at one of the previous meetings?
We've kind of built out this since then. I would say this particular piece of it, we've gone back and forth. We want to get the public's input on everything that we can. We also don't want to ask the public things that we can't do anything with their responses. So I think part, a lot of what is driving this is, like, engineering decisions, financing decisions, right-of-way. So what we're, we're trying to build out is something that helps us be responsive in different locations to figure out what might be good, what's, you know, you'll notice that there are a lot of different options selected. So the public will be viewing this tomorrow. This does fall into the category of one of those things where we don't want to ask them to put a lot of energy in if, like, the highway manual says absolutely not, it's not legal. So that's kind of the interaction they'll be having with it, is reflecting on it. We're not asking for specific feedback, but we're really asking people, here's the transportation network, how, in the future, how did it work for you? Did we get it right?
Right. Okay, great. That's, I just had to clarify that, because it looked very, a lot of this looks familiar, but thank you for that. Did you have something to add?
Well, I wanted to say that, as Ella pointed out, thinking about things at a certain altitude, whether it's the network and then a toolkit, we think works well for the city plan. And an example of what could then be done with that is the work that the city is doing on the western part of 38th now, to say, okay, we have these particular challenges and opportunities, and we know maybe we aren't going to get the perfect, it's not appropriate even maybe to go to the perfect sort of Dr. Cog Complete Streets Manual, or the, you know, the NACDO's ultimate, here's what you would do on the street. But like, what's works for this stretch of road in Wheat Ridge as defined by dot-dot-dot-dot-dot, many, many considerations, finances, limited budgets, limited right-of-way widths, all that, and then doing the engagement work around that as well. So what we hope this will do is set the stage for those future conversations when it comes time to figure out, what do you actually do in a specific place, in a specific project for which we specifically have the funding. And if you look back to the city plan, it'll say, well, it generally gave us this direction, says we should consider these things, but it's also not saying, you know, you must do X, Y, and Z, because you can't possibly know what the situation's going to bring you. And another reason why it's, be thoughtful about kind of how we present this to the community, what we ask, because if we mistakenly give the impression that there's some, that is the perfect NACDO or Dr. Cog Complete Streets Manual, that if people look at that and say, well, you're going to do that to all the corridors, or you're going to do that to my street, we don't want to leave that impression. Because even if we had that aspiration, which we don't necessarily, we would never be able to make that promise, as Ella pointed out. We just don't know, because of all those reasons. So hopefully, that's a helpful explainer as to why we're trying to leave this at a certain altitude, and then how we hope it might be used later on down the line.
No, that's great, and I appreciate that. I look forward to hearing more on that. But that, yeah, that's exactly what, kind of what I was looking for. So the only other thing that I think I wanted to just add to the mobility framework map, and part of it is already in the works, but 35th Avenue on the east side of Sheridan in Denver is considered a bicycle boulevard. And yes, that's Denver, but it, folks commute pretty heavily that way into Denver. So it's just something to know and consider if they're wanting, if, at least just for, you know, having that, you know, knowledge. So I think that's, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is, why is there no enhanced intersection crossings between the Kipling and Wadsworth? On that mobility framework, why there's no enhanced intersection crossings between Kipling and Wadsworth?
That's a, that's a good question.
Corridor enhancements, but there's not any specific targeted intersections.
Our gray-purple ovals might be doing double duty there.
Yeah.
We can be more clear about that.
Need to be more clear about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would, since we haven't really talked about bus transit and its importance to the city, I would recommend that you have a look at, some of the changes that are going to happen with RTD service west of Wadsworth. And given the fact that the Lutheran campus is now, will now be a, I don't know if you want to call it a transit hub, but it will be the terminus of two or three routes, and the connection between that and the Ward Road Station. But it just, yeah, you probably just want a simple update, because I understand there's some additions coming right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think staff brought that to our attention as well, that there's some changes to routes and a few other things as well.
Any further questions at this point? It's like we've got everybody satisfied right now, or at least question-free.
And if you do have more questions, like with the place-type framework, I'm happy to hear more from you. You do have everything on that. There isn't more complexity on this one. But I'll remind you in my email later this week that you're welcome to revisit this and send any thoughts that you have.
Well, we are ready to wrap up. Let's do some next steps here. We are going to keep working on the place-type framework and the detail that we've got to move into from there. Same thing on the mobility framework. This has been great, and we'll hear from the public, obviously, this week, and then also over time via What's Up Wheat Ridge, as well as Planning Commission. And we'll continue to work on the peaceful coexistence concept, same thing, figuring out what those pain points are, see if we can make progress on that in the plan. Keep working on our focus areas, as we discussed earlier. And then there's a, once we move into the heart of the fall, is really when we're going to have to kind of sequester ourselves and figure out some things and do some writing. And we'll have a draft ready in the early part of next year. And I don't think this, I don't think it's going to be the only bite of the apple now in February. I think there will be something in between there, probably, but we'll figure that out. It's kind of TBD. Oh, I should add the reminder for the open house tomorrow, and then for the survey on What's Up Wheat Ridge. I'll leave that up there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think that was a great discussion, great presentation. I hope everyone's looking forward to joining you tomorrow, the 17th, at the REC Center, filling out the online survey. For my part, I'm glad that you chose peaceful coexistence rather than mutually assured destruction as your, as your meme for the night. So anyway, if there isn't anything else, well, thank you very much for your efforts and plan to see you tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I believe we are ready to move to agenda item number two. This is a This is a program update on our homeless navigation program, so. I'll turn this over to you.
I'll turn it over to Mary Ann.
All right.
All right. Good morning, Eric. Good evening. Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant City Manager. We're here tonight with Corey Kohler, our Housing Navigator, and Maddy Forgan, our Homeless Navigator. Each fall, they come to you all with some program updates and give you a heads up on what's to come with severe weather. So they are here tonight to let you know how our homeless navigation program is going.
Hello. Good evening. So, yes, we are here, we're going to talk, this is an agenda, we're going to give an overview of the program. That'll be a refresher for most of you, but we just want to make sure we're all on the same page. We're going to go over some of the new reporting and data that we've, that we have since the last time we were here, talk about grants and partnerships, and then, of course, severe weather as winter is approaching. So ways to help that you all might be able to, to be able to talk with your constituents about, and then we'll have time for questions at the end.
Okay, so our program encompasses Wheat Ridge and Edgewater. We are part of a larger collaborative called the Jeffco Homeless Navigation Collaborative that was launched in January of 2020, and then our program itself was launched in December of that same year. The entire collaborative includes us, so Wheat Ridge and Edgewater. We have navigators in Golden, Lakewood, Westminster, and Arbada as well. That's all of them, yeah. And it's a really good setup. It's a great collaborative. We get together with the navigators from the other cities quite often, and it's a great way for us to case conference and share resources and things of that like. As for what we do on a daily basis, every week we do outreach, so we go to places that we know that people are congregating that sleep outside. We do that in Wheat Ridge and Edgewater. We do car outreach, and then we also recently expanded to doing outreach on the Green Belt. So we have a little gator that we drive around back there. And that's great because it allows us to reach a lot of people that prefer not to stay on the streets or in the more metropolitan-type areas. And on outreach, it's a great way for us to make rapport because we're handing out snacks and water, we're handing out like weather-specific things. So when it's cold, socks, hats. When it's hot, we'll also do like sun hats and sunscreen. So yeah, it's just a great way for us to meet people and like gain trust and learn community. If someone does express interest in becoming a part of our program, then we enroll them in something called HMIS. HMIS stands for Homeless Management Information System, and that is a statewide database that if, with people's consent, of course, that people experiencing homelessness are put into and they have a profile, it's a great way for us to store their general information. If I need to pull someone's birthday for some reason, but I can't get ahold of them, it'll be on their profile in HMIS. But we can also see other resources that they're connected to and other individuals that they work with if we need to do any sort of case conferencing or reaching out to others that they're working with. And then we also will help people get connected to their Medicaid and their EBT if they don't already have any of those government benefits or whatever else they might need. We help people order vital documents, so that's going to be IDs, social security cards, and birth certificates, and those are all super necessary for employment, housing, and what have you. And then ultimately, we're defining a pathway to housing for these individuals. So for some people, if they have no income or it's very low, all we can really do is help them get on subsidized wait lists or apply for vouchers. Some people are actively working or have higher income, and they really just need help with their security deposit, because for a lot of places, it's security deposit and first month's rent, and that big chunk of change is not something that a lot of folks just have sitting in their checking accounts. So we can help people with that. So yeah, we just work together with the individuals' goals in mind and develop a pathway to their goals, which usually are possible.
All right, so this is, now we're going to start looking at some of the new reporting that we have. So we used to pull a demographic report from HMIS, that database that Maddy mentioned, but it didn't look very good, just aesthetically, and it also wasn't really telling the story that we wanted to tell. So we used some of that data, but combined it with some other data that we keep here in-house and put it all together to tell a better story about the program. I'm not going to read off all of the data on these slides, but just sort of highlight some of the, some of the things that we want to focus on, on each slide. So this first one is referrals. So not only are we going out on outreach to meet people experiencing homelessness, we also get referrals sent to us. And this just goes over how many we get and where they come from. The biggest thing we wanted to draw your attention to here is that our, our main source of referrals is other city staff. This is mostly PD, community service officers, the park rangers, and our ESTs, who all do a really wonderful job. And we're actually on a, on a group chat with all of them so they can let us know in real time where they find people who might need our help. But it also is folks at the Active Adult Center and the REC Center. We get plenty of referrals that way as well, so it's spread all over the city. We have great community partners as well, Family Tree and Stride and all the rest, but the one I wanted to point out too was the 11% from municipal court. Specifically, our court staff has done a great job over the past year of developing our community court program, which allows people who are, who are receiving, you know, summonses from crimes related to homelessness to get in touch with us faster. So I expect that number to be a much higher proportion this, this time next year. It is growing significantly. We're starting to see more and more people come through that, which is, which is great. These are program exits. So since the program began in December of 2020, we have had 140 housing placements. It's actually 141 as of today. We had one moved in today. And that's, we've had 39 placements since the last time we came to talk to you in October of last year. Here, I wanted to highlight, up at the top right, the number of days before housing placement, just to highlight how long that this can take. There are some folks, like Maddy mentioned, that just need help with security deposit, and that's pretty straightforward. We can help those folks really quickly. But for the majority of our folks or the median, it's 145 days, and we can see up to nearly three years from the time that we first meet someone and enroll them in our program to when they get housing. Because for a lot of people, we just have to play the waiting game, you know, we put their names onto every waitlist and lottery that comes open, but we just have to, have to wait. And then down below that paragraph at the bottom, just thought this was a nice thing to point out, because it's, it's certainly not a requirement that the folks we work with have to end up residing in Wheat Ridge once they find housing, but we see here that most of them do, which is, which is kind of cool. So, you know, a lot of these folks that we've worked with who were experiencing homelessness and are now housed are your constituents. This slide is about our aftercare program, so that's a light form of case management that we developed. It's really just a way for us to check in with folks after they've received their housing placement, just to, you know, we've learned a lot of things in the almost four years that this program has been around, and one of the biggest is how much support people need after they're housed. We were having a lot of folks contact us, you know, when they were well on the road to eviction, and if they had contacted us, you know, even a few weeks earlier, we would have been able to do more to prevent that. So we wanted to be proactive and, and get in touch with people to see if there's anything coming up that they can, that we can help with. And it doesn't even have to be something that poses a threat to their housing. We just want to know what, what kind of things they're facing and how we can help. And so I wanted to illustrate the aftercare program by way of a, of a story of one of our clients. Her name is Carol, and we helped her find housing in early 2023. And didn't really hear much from her for almost a year, but then she did reach out to let us know that her landlord was going to sell the property where she, that she was renting. And because she was, you know, just, just barely sort of getting by making rent every month, she didn't have, as, again, as Maddy mentioned, she didn't have money to, to find a new place and certainly not for a security deposit to get in. And this is a huge gap that most service agencies don't help with. A lot of folks, you know, you can get rental assistance if you're behind on your rent, and you can get move-in assistance if you are currently experiencing homelessness. But for the people like Carol, who was in housing, did not need rental assistance, but needed that move-in assistance, there's just no service agencies that help with that. But we can, which is great. So we helped her find a new place so that she did not have, she didn't spend a single, single night, you know, on the streets or in between places. But sort of how the aftercare program works, you know, we're continuing to check in with her, and she, she is in a new place that we found, but she's paying $1,500 a month. She works at a grocery store making between $16 and $17 an hour, so it's still a struggle to meet rent every month. And very recently, she was involved in a car accident. She's okay, but her, her car is not, and she now does not have that reliable transportation. And I'll share with you something she texted to me after that happened. She said, "I wish I could just be normal. I just want to be able to pay my rent and bills and work like a normal person. I'm now almost 58 years old and I'm still trying to get on track. Is it ever going to get better?" So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's hard, and, and we can't, you know, we can't get her a new car. But what we can do, and one of the great things about our program, you know, she was spending 100, up, you know, hundreds of dollars every week on Lyft to get to work because she was, she, you know, she's got to keep working. But we, one of the things that we can do is, is help so we can pay for her lifts so that she can continue going to work, and she's now looking for a second job. And, you know, having that safety net of knowing no matter where she gets the job, we can still help with the Lyft costs to get her there so that she can stay caught up on her rent. So her outlook has improved, and that's just one of the, one of the ways that we try to help with this particular aspect of our program. These are our program expenses. You can see that the, the two highest by far are move-in costs and bridge housing. Again, as Maddy mentioned, move-in costs are one of the biggest barrier that people face. It's what they need the most, most, more often than not, just getting in the door for an apartment, especially, you know, the clients that we have who, who work and pay their rent, they just need that money to get in the door. So that's why we put so much into it. And I also wanted to highlight down at the bottom left, they have a cost to reach a housing placement. Just as it's a long process, it's also an expensive process. You can see there that we've spent almost $8,000 on one household to get them to the housing placement, but the median is about $1,600. Here's some of that demographic data that we are still pulling from HMIS, but we just wanted to make it look better and a little bit easier to digest. So you'll see there that almost 70% of all the clients that have come through the program have at least one disability. What's interesting is that, I can't cycle through this on the slide as it is, but if we look at just 2021 by itself, that proportion was much higher, and then it's been steadily decreasing until now we see the 69%. We're, we're thinking maybe that's because when the program first started, we were able to, to catch some of those most vulnerable people, and now it's, it's slowly falling, which is a good thing. And then one last bit for demographic data. You can see on the right that more than half of all of our clients have no income when we first start working with them, and the ones that do, it's usually a fixed income, either social security, retirement, or disability, or something along those lines. And then total months homeless in the past three years, that's a question we ask every, that's an HMIS question that we have to ask every person who's enrolled. And you see there that almost two-thirds of all of our clients have answered either more than 12 months or the first, this is their first month in the past three years being homeless. That's to highlight just how hard it is to break the cycle. Once, once you've been homeless for more than a year, it becomes exponentially harder to, to sort of escape it. So we are focused on trying to help break that cycle early.
We have some really amazing grants and partnerships. We work with the Glory of God Lutheran Church in Wheat Ridge. They have a bunch of amazing ladies who have a sewing circle, and they take t-shirts, like secondhand t-shirts, and they cut them and sew them into bags, which doesn't sound super exciting, but it is, because we give them out on outreach with all the stuff that we're giving people in them. Obviously, transporting things is difficult when you're walking around shopping cart or what have you, so we love those. And then just last month, we solidified a partnership with On the House, and that is a nonprofit that is both a junk removal service and also a furniture bank for people who have recently moved into housing but have nothing to furnish their homes with. So they partner directly with agencies like ours. They also work with Salvation Army and things of that sort. And then we can take our clients there, they can pick out enough stuff to furnish their entire apartment based on their family size. We will pay just a small fee, the client doesn't pay anything, and then it gets delivered to their new home. And this is really great for maintaining housing, because for a lot of folks, if they move into housing, but they have nothing to sleep on or sit on or eat on, it's just not much better, and it can feel really lonely then, just like the street, so it's awesome.
And up there on the right is the On the House warehouse, which, you know, they've only been around for a few months, and already it's, it's full, and it's all really, really good quality stuff. We went to go see it. We are working our way through a, some, some money from DOLA, the Homelessness Resolution Program, formerly known as ESG, but it's mostly Prop 123 money, and we received $75,000 last year. The grant cycle started on April 1st, so we're working our way through, through that. We're using it to, for bridge housing, to help stabilize folks that we have found a permanent solution for, and we just need to bridge a little bit of time. And we also just finished up a grant cycle, the Thriving Jeffco Grant, which came to us from the Colorado Gives Foundation, money that they wanted to see used, just as the name implies, for, to help residents of Jeffco thrive. So just, you know, beyond their basic needs of housing, what, what can we do to help people truly flourish? And this, this is two quick examples up there on the left of a cooking set for, for a client who, who really enjoys cooking. And those are, above that, those are some tools for HVAC for a client who had all the training for an HVAC job, but it's hard to find those jobs if you don't have the tools yourselves. A lot of them require that you bring the tools, so we were able to help with that. And then we have one more Thriving Jeffco story.
Yeah, I had a client who we recently housed through our program. He is in recovery as of recently, ended out of prison for a while, he has a pretty troubled past, but he's doing really good now. And he reached out to me and told me that he has like a huge passion for photography, but that kind of got lost in the midst of his stints being institutionalized. So we were able to buy him a camera that he's going to use. He's also Lakota Sioux and from the Badlands, so he has all these brand ideas, all these photos he's going to take, and he's going to send them to me. So just very sweet, and I'm happy to be able to do that. Okay, severe weather. So the severe weather shelter network, which has been providing shelter beds during severe weather episodes for over a decade, is not functioning this season. They're a nonprofit, and they no longer have the funding. But there are some other ideas in the works. A lot of these are kind of recent, and we're still going to keep you guys updated because they're still a bit in the works. But one of them is Recovery Works in Lakewood. They're going to be opening some shelter beds. We're not quite sure about the capacity quite yet, but we will keep you guys up to date. And then very recently, the Jeffco County Commissioners have approved a plan to spend a million in ARPA funding to procure these mobile sheltering units that can be used not only for severe cold, but also for severe heat and other weather disasters throughout the year. They are still working on figuring out the staffing agencies that are going to be working them, because they do need to have management, so that's another thing that we'll keep you guys updated on. And then additionally, another $50,000 in motel voucher-ing funding will be provided to us as well to help kind of just fill that gap. And yes, I'll, I'll be sending out an email to you guys once we know a little bit more, but this hasn't started to get colder, it's all still developing, but we're optimistic. And then this is also going to be something that's going to be emailed out to you guys. I'm sure that you hear from constituents about how they maybe want to help their own house neighbors. So this is a guide that I've made about how you can donate time, goods, or money to a bunch of pretty far-reaching nonprofits, churches, agencies in Jeffco, and there's some Wheat Ridge ones in there specifically as well. So yeah, I'll send that out to you guys as well.
That's it?
And that's it.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Questions from counsel? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the work you do every day in this community. It's just incredibly important and valuable. And, I mean, the data tells a story too, but the stories tell the stories, so thanks for bringing a few of those. I, I shared a couple of weeks ago that I met a young man who's actually living, cannot remember the name of the, what's the building over by Safeway? What's in, yeah. So I met a young man, he and his mom are housed there, and he is doing some yard cleanup, and he's coming to my house twice and is phenomenal. But his story of just what a difference your work has made in his life and his mom's life was just incredibly powerful, so it just, it's great to see those success stories. I do have a question. The, the referrals chart, there's like a pretty significant dip in Q3, and I just was wondering if that's just because we're not through it, or if you're and I just was wondering if that's just because we're not through it or if you're seeing an actual decline in referrals?
No, I think it's just because we're not, we're not through Q3 yet.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I appreciated hearing the, the bit about uh, being able to help with transportation costs. The, the couple of times I've done outreach and a couple of times I've engaged with people in my neighborhood, I know a lot of times that they're, what they need to do is they need to get somewhere in order to do things, as you know, let me explain your job. Um, you know, they, they need to get somewhere to, you know, make phone calls, to, you know, try and get their identifying information. Um, and a lot of times they're really struggling because they have a lot of stuff and they have to move their stuff and they are afraid of leaving it somewhere if they have to go, like go to an office to get their driver's light or an ID or whatever. Do we have any assistance that we do to help them with short-term storage for belongings? So that they've got the mobility to go do things they need to do?
Short answer is no. Um, and I know this has, this has come up before. We've talked about it before, but um, no, it's, it's, it's a really tricky issue and we haven't found a good solution to help with that particularly yet. Um, but we're always thinking about it and, you know, have, that's why we apply for grants too. Sometimes we can use the grant money to, to help with sort of very specific things like that. So we're always thinking about it.
The, the church in my neighborhood a couple of years ago actually had suggested, like, they could offer on like Wednesdays that parishioners could hang out and people could leave their stuff for the day. Um, so I'm just mentioning there might be church partners who might be able to stop sit as, as an option. Um, and then something that really stood out to me last year when you were here, Corey, you really did a good job of explaining to us how long it takes to recover from the trauma of homelessness. And especially looking at the statistics and data you have around the tenure of homelessness. And so I just want to bring that to the forefront again this year, that, that the work that you're doing around helping, you know, get people like into stable housing is just such an important part to the, you know, one step towards helping recover from that, that trauma of, of being homeless, but it doesn't switch a flip. It's a dial that gets turned. So I think just it's helpful for all of us to remember that it's, it's a first important step. Um, and then lastly, as they'll know, I'm a huge fan of happiness gardens. Um, is there, is there any, if, if there is ever interest from anyone around gardening, we, a couple of weeks ago when the USDA was here, they were talking about how in a lot of community gardens, um, they're actually connecting like immigrants and multi-generational uh, families who have like, you know, a lot of knowledge and understanding around like urban agriculture and regenerative agricultural practices and really trying to hub that in community gardens to, A, allow people to do things that like are really important to them and help them feel connected to, you know, long, long stories of their, their family that are healthy. So um, I just want to, I guess, put out there, if, if we ever run into folks who might have an interest in participating in the community garden, it'd just be really great for us to connect those dots within our city because there, there is space and we have a new community garden coming online soon and, and that community garden should be pretty accessible to our, our housing that's coming in. So I just want to thank you guys and, um, and keep, keep doing good work. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for all you're doing. It's a lot. Um, it's amazing how much you're getting done and there's two of you. It's pretty amazing. Um, a couple of questions. First one being, um, there is a church right off of Wadsworth that's south. It's in Lakewood and I can't remember the name of it, but I, one day a week they have a, a shower trailer that comes. Does Wheat Ridge have anything like that? Are you, is that an, have you looked into that at all?
Uh, no, as far as I'm aware, that shower truck does not come to any churches in Wheat Ridge. Yes, thank you. We are, but, uh, yes, we, uh, we work very closely with rec center staff. Um, they wanted to revamp their sort of daily drop-in shower program and they brought us into that conversation and and we have a great relationship with them now. So we, any of our clients who ever express a need for, for showers, we can very quickly get them set up at the rec center.
That's great. Um, other question is, folks that have pets. Did those, did the transitional housing that they sometimes, you know, are able to, to utilize, do the, do you have any idea if, if any of those transitional housing options have like a no pet policy or can you talk a little bit more about that and how maybe folks are getting resources?
It really just varies based on who's running the housing program. Um, I would say it's a healthy mix of not allowing pets and allowing pets. I'm in the camp of, I prefer when they do allow pets because so many people will refuse housing if their pets aren't allowed to go. Um, so that's something that I always try to advocate for, but it really just, it's not a great answer, but it really just depends on the agency that's running it.
No, that's good. I, I, I've heard of, of that exact thing and folks, if they, you know, if they can't take their, their pet, then they just won't utilize it. So um, yeah, I guess I was thinking more of, i- in, within the resources, do you, have you heard of or do you know, has anyone been able to get pet food or is that something that is part of the, they're, they can ask for things, you know, for that? Is that part of, has that been a big, I guess, a big um, ask or any, any?
I haven't been asked personally too much. I don't know if you have, but that's something we could do.
Yes, uh, the Foothills Animal Shelter does provide those resources for folks who need it. So there's a lot of, um, the community member that donates um, food regularly and they're able to supply it. So a lot, in a lot of the um, regional um, safe parking lots, they'll provide um, dog food specifically, um, but then they're available upon request if needed.
Got it. Thank you. Glad you know about that. Um, that's all I've got. Thank you so much for all of this. This is great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Larson?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and just a, a couple of very, very quick questions. Um, I've had constituents ask me um, if I encounter or I, I notice somebody in my neighborhood that could use some assistance. What's the best way to, to get ahold of you guys?
Yeah, you can, uh, they can email us is usually the best way. Uh, it's either housing navigator or homeless navigator at ci.wetridge. Um, that's the quickest way and we, yeah, we'll, we'll respond to, to constituent residents um, directly.
And preferred over calling uh, like three one one or something, huh?
Uh, honestly, it's, it's the preference of the resident, but we're happy to, to talk to anyone.
Okay, and, and I, I did recognize that you um, are part of a um, both a online or a text chat um, loop that you can refer to other um, city staff and whatnot. Okay, the, the other question I had is, and, and this is something I've noticed a few times uh, where we'll see RVs parked in a city park and they typically don't stay overnight, but they'll come back to the same location seven days a week. Uh, what is your experience with dealing with RVs that, um, that are persistent?
A lot of times we've noticed they're not actually illegally parked, so there's not much that the PD can do. But if it's something, if they're noticing that they're, it's, it's that consistent, then we'll go tap on the door if we happen to go by and see if they're, they're in need of anything. I feel like that doesn't happen too often that people are interested in that help or that we actually get in touch with anybody, but yeah.
Okay. Uh, uh, again, it's, it's a situation where you, they're, they're typically not, well, they wouldn't be parked in a city park, for example, overnight, uh, but they'll return the next day and, and probably stay, you know, from dawn to dusk.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing that's not illegal. Um, there's not much we can do about that. Um, Supreme Court recently made some changes on what we can do to enforce camping, overnight camping. Um, but um, just parking during the day, it's not considered illegal.
Right. And I, I certainly appreciate the uh, additional effort that goes into getting on a uh, ATV and driving up and down.
It's very fun.
They, they're great.
My favorite part of the week.
Uh, because it, yeah, it, it just makes sense and, and I certainly appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Also, Dan, we have business cards that you can feel free, I'll give you some if you'd like, anybody that needs them and you can feel free to give those out to residents or people experiencing homelessness if you, if they're asking for help or what.
Most helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, so in your experience, um, there is a pretty high number of like auto exits, which means that you've had no contact with them. Uh, what would you say usually occurs in that kind of a situation?
I think for a lot of those folks, um, they were maybe just passing through Wheat Ridge. Um, you know, with, you know, uh, bookended by Lakewood, Arvada and Denver, uh, all places that generally have, have more resources. So I think a lot of folks maybe were just here and then moved on. Yeah, or a lot of those folks maybe got housing through, you know, through other channels. And then so we just lost touch because they, they got housing elsewhere.
That was actually a good segue into my next question. Um, if, if you could touch on like the regional efforts and, and the partnerships with other cities in Jefferson County and um, kind of the, like, this is a wonderful, um, you know, visual of what happens in Wheat Ridge, but you know, can you talk, can you just talk about regionally in Jefferson County? How this is playing out as well?
Yeah, like how we work together with the other cities.
Mm-hmm, and do they track a lot of this data and do you, do you work and collaborate?
Yes.
Pretty closely?
Yes, they use the same database that we do. So, and we do referrals like to each other quite often because we primarily try to make sure that we're working with people who stay in Wheat Ridge or Edgewater mostly or like receive their benefits through Jefferson County at a minimum. But if we find that they're connected to other resources in Lakewood and they're really like, they're sleeping there all the time, then I can directly make a referral to that navigator and that navigator will reach out to them since it's just more appropriate for them to be utilizing their resources based on where they're physically staying. Um, and then we do have meetings mu- every two weeks?
Yes.
Every two weeks, we have a meeting with everybody where we all get together. Just talk about any updates that are going on. Severe weather has been a big one recently. Any new resources or housing opportunities that we may be able to make direct referrals to? And then sometimes we do know the same clients and so if we find that like one of our clients has moved to Gold and then we can maybe case conference if we need to or give insight on that client to that navigator. So we're very close together.
Awesome. And then, uh, could you just speak to like where you um, end up housing a lot of these folks? Like you said, several stay in Wheat Ridge. Are there certain um, areas like, you know, Caesar Square or um?
Yeah, we certainly have um, housed quite a number of people at, at Foothills properties, not necessarily Caesar Square, but other Foothills properties. Um, so yeah, a lot of them are through housing authorities, either Foothills or Metro West. Um, the one today was Housing Authority in Inglewood. Um, so it's anywhere that, that we can find places that are open.
So it's beneficial for us to be, it's kind of what I'm getting at, is investing in those, in those housing options because it directly coordinates with the work that you're doing.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple, just a couple of questions. Since we started the navigation program in twenty twenty, uh, throughout the county, we've had a lot of discussions on building navigation centers, you know, one in the north, one in the south of the county. And uh, we, I don't believe we've built one yet or opened one yet, but um, I, I know that uh, Arvada is looking at another, another facility. Perhaps to do that, I'm going to a meeting tomorrow night to sort of understand a little bit more about that. Uh, do you think these are facilities that are still needed? Is that an, an outmoded or a, not a, not the right? Um, do you think the right approach to, to be doing it or should we, should we continue moving down a navigation center concept or, or move to something else?
I think so.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's still um, a great solution, uh, having a one-stop shop where, where folks can get so many of their needs met in one place is, is crucial.
Okay. And then I had one other question that um, people ask me, you know, how's the Wheat Ridge homeless situ-, how's, how's the homeless situation in Wheat Ridge? Do we have, do you see numbers increasing, decreasing? Do you think we have um, a lot of people still on the street or, or in, in hidden corners around our, around our community or are we, are we making uh, sort of positive uh, progress, I guess, in, in being able to provide services and housing to, to a good percentage of them?
I think we're making progress, yes. Um, the, the most recent data from point in time is county level. So I can't give you Wheat Ridge specific. Um, but it certainly feels to us out every week that we are making progress.
I do think people are coming over from Denver though as well. So as much progress over making people are migrating a little bit out of Denver sometimes, so it fluctuates, but he's right overall.
Okay. And I noticed that Recovery Works on Colfax has opened up. Is that, has that provides some relief, a good uh, resource for the homeless population?
Yeah, they have food, laundry, showers, case management. So it's a, it's a great example of one of those navigation centers that's serving a lot of people.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Dozeman?
Thank you. Uh, just spurred another question in regards to um, some of those wraparound services. Do you offer either resources, referrals, um, you know, for folks looking for skills or help with resumes and, and workforce training?
Yeah, referrals.
Okay.
Lots of referrals.
And, and what partners do you question?
Um, one particularly um, that I've been trying to get involved with recently is the state has an apprenticeship program that they sponsor apprenticeships, uh, so folks can get paid to learn a trade. Um, so that's one of the partners that we try to refer folks.
Any further questions? Thank you all for bringing this to us tonight. You guys have done great, great work in our community. It's, it's a, it's a tough problem, but really glad that you're, you're there in the front line addressing it with us. And, and if we can ever be of help or we need to know something that, that we don't know, please come back and tell us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Two hours in, everybody okay to keep moving forward? Okay. We're, have our um, third agenda item uh, coming up. And this is a discussion on a legislative advocacy program.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this was uh, directed by City Council um, a few months ago that we bring back some recommendations on how we could maybe enhance our legislative uh, programming. And Cole's done quite a bit of research and has some recommendations for you this evening. I think he's uh, got his program ready to go. You gonna come sit with us? Good. Cole?
Please, Sal.
Good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's lovely to be here with you this evening, tonight, to talk about a legislative advocacy program. So we'll get started with the agenda of our presentation. We're going to go through the background, the, how we got here, why we're discussing this issue tonight. Then we're going to move on to briefly discuss what our current legislative efforts are before moving on to discuss staff's proposed legislative strategy and bringing a conclusion to this presentation. So as I said, let's start with the background. At the March fourth, twenty twenty-four council study session, uh, the city council considered an advocacy position resolution or an APR to oppose HB twenty-five eleven fifty-two. And if you recall, that was the Transit Oriented Communities Bill. It was during that conversation amongst council, uh, that they came to the conclusion that they wanted to enhance the city's legislative strategy and establish a clear process to consider APRs moving forward. So before moving on to discuss what that strategy proposal is based on council's desires, let's first take a moment to discuss what our current legislative efforts are. So Wheat Ridge is an active member of both the National League of Cities and the Colorado Municipal League. Each of these organizations creates a legislative agenda and that sets the tone for their advocacy and lobbying efforts throughout the year. Wheat Ridge contributes to those agendas by providing feedback and insight. And historically, a Wheat Ridge counselor or the mayor currently has either served on CML Executive Board or the CML Policy Committee, so giving that direct insight and giving that direct oversight of CML's program. Also, the city holds an annual legislative forum where we invite a representative from CML and our local legislators to come and talk about their priorities for the upcoming legislative session and to discuss the city's priorities with them. The city has also historically considered advocacy position resolutions on particular bills over the years. Overall, when we take a look at what Wheat Ridge's current- when we take a look at what Wheat Ridge's current efforts are and we compare them to other municipalities, we're about on par. There are some things that other cities do that we don't do, but there are some things that we do that they don't do and vice versa. But overall, we're about on par with comparable municipalities. And then before we move on to discuss staff's proposal, I just wanted to mention that that proposal will be in addition to these current legislative efforts. So we're not proposing eliminating or replacing any of these things, but building on this as a foundation moving forward. So let's talk about that legislative advocacy program we're proposing kind of at a high level first. We're proposing that the city adopt a legislative agenda and that they review it on an annual basis, that you form a legislative committee, and their responsibility would be to review advocacy position resolutions and give recommendations to the city council, that the city council consider those advocacy position resolutions, and that if a advocacy position resolution is adopted, that gives the prompt to staff to begin lobbying efforts. This proposal that we're putting in front of you is designed to be complementary but flexible. So the way we're designing it, each of these elements builds on one another. But they can also stand alone. And these proposals can remain complementary even if a piece is removed. So if, for example, you felt like you wanted to do all of the things except for the legislative committee, they would still remain complementary and be able to build on one another. With all that being said, let's get into the meat of it and talk about what each one of these things is. So the legislative agenda, kind of similar to what NLC and CML do, it defines a city's stance on key issues likely to be addressed by the legislature, such as public safety or affordable housing. Many other cities, like the cities of Lafayette and Aspen, have legislative agendas that vary in specificity, scope, and length. So the city of Lafayette, for example, is kind of broad, high level, only focuses on the Colorado State Legislature, and it's a couple pages long. We included an example of that in your packet for you. Aspen, on the other hand, theirs is really quite detailed, gets into a lot of specifics. And within its scope is not only the Colorado Legislature, but the federal government, intergovernmental agreements, non-governmental organizations, et cetera. And their length is quite long as well. It's over 20 pages. We're recommending that the council adopt a legislative agenda that is focused specifically on the Colorado Legislature, that we kind of keep it at that high-level, broad policy statement level, and that be reviewed annually in December or January each year in anticipation of the upcoming legislative session. Next, let's talk about the Legislative Committee. In the state of Colorado and among front-range municipalities, a Legislative Committee is a city council subcommittee tasked with reviewing specific bills and recommending advocacy positions to the broader council. Cities like Brighton, Northland, and Erie have these legislative committees, and they operate in this manner. Elsewhere, other committees will include residents on their legislative committees in addition to council members, or they'll use other existing city committees to serve that function and review legislation before recommending it go to the council with an APR. We're recommending that the council form a legislative subcommittee that would be composed of the mayor and two councillors selected by the councillor to serve two-year terms. We're recommending that this committee meet on an as-needed slash bi-weekly basis during the Colorado Legislative Session, so that we can review bills as they come in. And we're recommending that this committee be tasked with reviewing legislation and recommending APRs to the council that are aligned with the city's legislative agenda. That, of course, brings us to those advocacy position resolutions, which again, these are formal statements expressing a city's stance on specific bills. They're really useful because they empower staff and elected officials to advocate on behalf of the city, specifically mentioning some of the points that are within those APRs. And they're also encouraged by CML to support their lobbying activities. So when we pass an APR, we try to send that information to CML, and then they can use that information in their discussions with legislators. We took a look at quite a number of cities to see if they were active in passing APRs. But in this last legislative session, we only found that among 13 cities looked at, only Littleton and Erie had considered those APRs. So we are recommending that the city council consider these APRs for a few bills each session, that they be aligned with that legislative agenda, and as stated earlier, that they be recommended by the Legislative Committee. And then that brings us to lobbying. So briefly, before we get too far into it, I wanted to set a baseline of what lobbying means, because it's a term that gets thrown around a lot. So the way CML does it and what that means in this context could be activities like meeting with legislators and their staff to discuss proposed legislation, creating and disseminating information materials on legislation, sharing those with community groups and local legislators so they're aware of the city's positions, and testifying before committees on relevant bills. All 271 Colorado cities rely on CML to lobby on behalf of their interests, and they do a fantastic job. Some cities, like Arvada and Thornton, are looking for even more lobbying services. So they'll go out and they'll employ lobbying firms to further support their legislative interests. Sometimes they do things that are a little bit different from CML, but oftentimes, these organizations are duplicating some of the efforts, so just adding, you know, more manpower, if you will, to the lobbying efforts at Capitol Hill. We are proposing a strategy when it comes to lobbying that enhances the city's lobbying activities, but it takes advantage of our existing resources rather than incurring the additional expenses of hiring the lobbying firm or outside services. So our proposal is that upon council's adoption of an APR, staff recommends engaging targeted lobbying activities with guidance from the Legislative Committee. And those targeted lobbying activities will be some of the things I mentioned, but they also vary a little bit depending on the bill, depending on guidance from the Legislative Committee. And we really like this approach because we feel if we limit it to those few key bills that are associated with those APRs, again, then we could do it with our existing resources. That brings me to the conclusion of the presentation, but just to recap things briefly, our recommendation is that the city council adopt a legislative agenda on an annual basis, be that high-level, broad strokes, policy document, and that that document be used by the Legislative Committee to inform the recommendations they make to the city council on APRs, and that when an APR is adopted by the city council, that triggers the lobbying process for staff. As I mentioned earlier, alternatively, the city council could adopt a legislative strategy with some adjustments or exclusions. And if you have questions about what that might look like, we can talk about that as well. But that really brings me to the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to turn it back over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll just go write the questions from council. It's not that late now. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think this approach really works well with us to identify what our priorities are so that when we're engaging with our state legislature, it aligns with our priorities and has sort of a rhythm that's engaged all of us in a process from start to finish. So I, I really appreciate all the recommendations and support, support them as they're written. And I think one of the things, just in some of my other work, where I've gotten to work with cities who are doing this work, is, as we heard earlier from Eric Amy, like, we're doing really great stuff in this city. And so it's not just taking positions, but it's actually influencing the contours of the legislation. And I think that the rest of the state has a lot to learn from us. And so it actually, not to like overstate our value, but I think we're doing a lot of really, I think, innovative stuff here. And I think we, as a body, are really good at setting policies. So when the state's actually working on things that we've prioritized and worked on, this process actually allows us to really, like, you know, migrate our good practices to the state. And I know, I know Lauren's been engaged several times in conversations, and I've heard through the grapevine that things that have come out of Lauren's mouth are, you know, really valued. So I just, I like how this engages us as a council, engages us as a city, but I think it also allows us to have more influence, to make sure that as the state's contemplating things that we've already contemplated, that it reflects the solutions we've come up with here, because I think we come up with good solutions. I think all around, this is a really good, really good approach. And I, and I recognize we're identifying the staff to be doing some of these lobbying activities after the APRs, because we need more acronyms. But I mean, that also falls on us as elected officials to engage with our elected officials. And so I hope that this process doesn't just result in a legislative agenda in our process that provides more transparency and clarity, but I think allows us to engage more with our state leaders because we inherit a lot of their work. And so I think this overall is going to just be like for really good civic health, but I think will benefit our city. So I support all of this, and I just really want to thank you for bringing it forward and your thoughtful work on it.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Counselor Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. On a question where the CML may not agree with what Wheat Ridge policy would be, what will we do?
Well, it depends on the issue, but the city council certainly has the ability to disagree with CML. And that could be for any specific reason. But if we did so, we would want to articulate the reasons why in a really clear way, and we would just incorporate that into the work that we did.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll just add to that real quick. And there are many issues that CML will not take up as a priority that year. They're just too busy focusing on other things. And there's certain, certain things that are very local to us that we want to focus on. And that happens a lot, I think. And so I think this is a good way to, to bring those to the table.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what if there's a split council on various issues? Like, how, how would you address that? Or would it just be majority rules and that's, we can say no to the resolution when it, when it comes to the DIES? And is that mostly the Legislative Committee's job to determine what it is that we want to take positions on?
Yeah, I think that that's tough. And I think Ms. Hulteen can add to that, too. But, you know, I think this council does a really good job with consensus building. And I think we use that process to determine if, you know, if there's not, if it looks pretty split, I think you guys do a really good job of either getting to a better consensus or just deciding not to move forward with it. So I think it's case by case, but Ms. Hulteen, you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I think it's a really good question. And it's why I like this process, because I think that shows up in the development of the legislative agenda, because what we'd be doing there is saying, these things are important enough to us. And, and if you look at Lafayette, which I think is a great example of something that would be achievable for a community our size, is what they've done is they're like, here are six things that are important enough that we're going to be tracking this at the state level. And it's not just a bullet point of the thing, but here's within it what we would want to accomplish within that. So if the legislative agenda has enough of a framework, it allows us that when things come through, we check it against our own framework. And, and then, you know, as we learned with city plan, not all frameworks anticipate all things. But I think what it does is it allows us to be checking against our own priorities instead of having ad hoc things come forward where we haven't had those conversations, and then we're having really nuanced, tricky conversations that don't have an existing framework. So I think, to Patrick's point, I think we've reached good places. But if in that legislative agenda-setting process, we, we come up with things that we're not reaching consensus on, then it's not a priority in our legislative agenda, because we don't have the clarity that it's going to be worth our resources and our staff's resources to pursue a specific outcome. So I think, I think it's, it's baked into the process a little bit, but we could reach a point where, where there's an APR coming forward that we don't, we don't get to the finish line on.
It's also baked into CML's process, right? I mean, you're on the Policy Committee. If there are certain issues that are not, there's not consensus across the state, city to city, they, they don't touch it.
And I also appreciate just the comments around, you know, being selective of the positions that we take, because then, well, it'll influence a little bit more, and also not outsourcing for lobbying efforts and really taking that in-house. And as Council Member Hulteen said, we've done a really wonderful job at advocating and applying for grants and getting funding to move policy forward. And so I think that we have created a really good framework, and I think this is a really great way for us to elevate those conversations and be a part of the process at the state level. And so I just, I really appreciate, I know this came out of us wanting to be cautious of, of having that more local control and not having the state legislator tie our hands when we're already addressing some of these really tough issues like homelessness, accessory dwelling units, so on and so forth. And so I think this really positions Wheat Ridge very well, especially because we're building on success. So thank you so much for all of that.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item? Counselor Larson?
Just one quick question. During the session, there are any number of firms out there that will provide weekly updates and position suggestions. Where do we get ours now? Is it from CML or?
Yeah, so during the legislative session, CML holds these bi-weekly conversations with a representative, a staff member typically from each city. And I participate in those as a representative from Wheat Ridge. So it's part of what we would be bringing to that legislative subcommittee would be some of the information that comes from those conversations with CML and gives those weekly updates. And, you know, they're on Capitol Hill every single day and intimately involved in the process. So it's a great opportunity for us to rely on the insider information that they're getting and bring it back to that legislative subcommittee to go over those intimate details.
Yeah, Cole, that certainly makes sense. Would the original CML report be available as well, or would we get it sort of a condensed version?
Yeah, we can certainly, I think we'll want to take a look at it and see if there's information in there that is relevant or not relevant, and we feel like that. You know, this will be our year one of implementing this program. So it's also going to be a little bit, kind of see how it goes and adjust how it happens, because we don't really have, you know, the best idea going into it exactly what it's going to look like. But you'll certainly get some version of that document.
Counselor Hulteen?
One more suggestion to consider. You outlined a process of setting the legislative agenda in November, December, which aligns with legislative session actually starting in January. There are a handful of, I think, pretty important interim committees that meet, you know, usually starting in July, August. And they set some priorities, and those are bills that the committees will refer into the legislative session. Having participated in policy setting in a couple of those, I just want to flag that we should have in our calculus of if we're going to do this, tracking some of those, because that's actually, I think, really, if they're tackling something that's really important here, like, you know, affordable housing, that's actually, it's kind of like the equivalent of a study session. And you can really influence the contours of like how legislators think about the bill going into the session, because once the session starts, it's like chaos. But those referred bills tend to have a little bit more success and are a little bit more collaborative. So I just want to put tracking, if we could include tracking interim committees that align with our priorities as part of, part of that.
Any further discussion from council members? I want to say thank you, Cole, for bringing this forward. You know, I, I've done a, you know, a fair amount of listening in legislative committees. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes on in a very short amount of time during the session. So I think it's, it's good that the council has the opportunity before the session to sort of talk about the priorities that we have, and, and what, as Counselor Hulteen said, what might be coming through committees or, or that we, that we know may be coming up. The other thing about being educated as a council is that, you know, we have legislators that live in our community, and they're, they're leaders in the, in the House and the Senate. And, you know, you meet them in the grocery store, and you might meet them at a coffee, coffee shop. And, and it's, there's a, there's a good deal of information and a good deal of sort of knowledge transfer that you have an opportunity to talk to your legislators about, to sort of influence or to let them know how you as a councillor and, and know how you as a counselor and representing your community, how your community feels about these issues. And they're sensitive to that information. So if there's no more discussion, Cole has provided us with two options. One of them is to adopt the recommendations, and the other one is to adopt them with some exclusions. The third one he didn't put on there is to not adopt them. So I suppose that's also another, you know, part of the thing. But do we have a consensus to adopt the recommendations that staff has brought forward? Thank you, I would agree with that, Cole. Thank you very much for putting this package together. I think you did a great thing. The only thing I noticed in your presentation was, I think, in your opening slide, you talked about HB 25 and a bill after that. And, you know, please don't start the Legislative Session any sooner than we need to, so, but thanks for a great presentation.
Mayor, I actually have a question.
Oh, you do have another question? Okay, I'm just about to gavel you off, but I'll let you go.
Yeah, sorry. So what is the process for identifying the counselors for, like, November, December's coming? So what is the process? Is it, like, self-nomination? Is it, like, yeah, what is the process for identifying the counselors?
What do you think, Mr. Mayor?
I thought it was, you know, I thought it was like axe-throwing or something.
Well, I'm hosed.
I think you take interest, maybe.
I guess we would, you know, sort of express an interest if you're, you know, if you've got an interest, pass it on to staff, and I guess we'll sort of look and see what the potential candidates are, and then we might need to look and see what a fair process would be.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On point? Okay, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, thanks, Cole. Appreciate you bringing that forward. Well, yeah, okay, let's go back to our agenda here. We're just kind of getting moving here. We've got staff reports.
I think that's it, nothing else. Just a reminder that tomorrow night is City Plan, Public Open House at the Rec Center. Please try.
Starts at 4:30, right?
Yes, 4:30, 7:00. 6:30, 4:30, 6:30.
Yeah.
So that's it.
Okay, elected officials' reports. Counselor Holtein.
Thanks, I've been talking a lot tonight. I, last week, shared that there'd been a water main break in my district, and that the city was responsive alongside Wheat Ridge Water District to repair the break. And then I reached out over the weekend in response to constituent complaints that the street was still pretty messy and hadn't been cleaned up. And so I just appreciate Patrick and Maria were responsive to that, and that the city is actually going to meet with the water district to discuss expectations on when there is a water main break, what is the responsibility of the water district and the city, and what that coordinated response looks like, so that our constituents, they don't always really care much about the difference between the city and the water district when their street is flooded, and then there's a bunch of gunk left over. So just really, really want to recognize the city's responsiveness, and I appreciate that there's a follow-up conversation with the water district to figure out how to keep that process a little bit more smooth. So that's all I got, thanks.
Okay, additional reports? Counselor Rome.
Yes, Saturday, I attended the Safe Routes to Parks, the traffic painting with Michael Constance, Rachel Holtein, and Director DeAndrea. There's a lot of staff there. I was on Miller Street, kind of by the Mount Phoenix and Prudential Park. And what a wonderful opportunity that was to participate, see all those people there, and, you know, add some color, create a sense of community for that area. My daughter went to Mount Phoenix, and I just, you know, thank you. It was a, I know it was a lot, it was a lot of work to get everybody on board, and I thought it went pretty smoothly. The other thing is, I went to the CML District Meeting down at Cherry Hills. I would encourage my other council members to attend. It's really interesting to see the other communities, what they have to say, and I chat with other council members, and I was, I had a mayor on one side, a mayor on the other side of me, and we were chatting about all sorts of different things, and it was a real pleasure just to be there. And they also had, what was interesting was, they had three different entities, Jeffco, Denver, and Arapahoe County Sheriff's Department on horses. So there's 10 horses, 10 officers, and they were showing how they deal with crowd control with the horses. And so that was, that was kind of a rare treat to see that. And, yeah, it was very gracious to have Cherry Hills, you know, have us, you know, come there and host that. And I was getting pretty close to when they were asking, when Kevin was asking about who's going to host next, and it's like, well, I guess I could have said yes, but I probably should wait for permission. So, anyway, thank you.
The tip of the spear. So when the, so when the three of them get together, is it a posse, or is it a?
I don't know, but they, but they, I did, I did learn some, I looked at a very interesting, I know a little about horses, and one of the horses, I couldn't place it. I said, what? What horse is that? And he said, that is a Mustang, and it was a blue-roned Mustang, and had a very interesting color to it. But they all had different, you know, of course, the horses all have different personalities, and it was just, it was really neat to see that coordinated, how they all kind of came together, and they're just kind of sharing that, you know? So, I don't know, maybe we, maybe we should, we could volunteer council member, we'll for some type of coordinated, you know, goat.
Goat, goat.
Maybe we could call that the cavalry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further elected officials' reports? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got three items here. The first one, very quick, I got an email this morning from our good friends at Excel Energy, and they reported an outage fairly near my house, but it was on the other side of I-70, so it didn't, my power was still on, but what it did was allow me to follow the link to their page where they report power outages, and I am very unhappy to report that the map that they showed is exactly the same one as that came up in April. They have not made any improvements to their communications with their customers, and I would think that at some point, we may want to join the group of people that are kind of trying to get Excel to amend their ways. The second item I have is on television tonight, if you're watching the 5 o'clock news. CBS 4 reported a follow-up to a story they did a week ago on some of our business owners along Wadsworth are unhappy, unhappy with what they claim was originally a two-year reconstruction project for Wadsworth and has turned into projects longer than that, and that was reflected in some of their comments. And I did see Maria responding today on the news, and she did a very good job of explaining the circumstances that we are facing, getting that road finished and get it finished in a timely manner. The third item I have is reporting as a tourist. I had the opportunity to join some of my motorcycle-riding friends, and we went for a long weekend down in Durango, and while I was there, and some of you know, I, at one point, lived in Durango for about four or five years, and got to know the town and got to see sort of uphand, or firsthand, the results of an effort to bring people into the city that live somewhere else. It's called tourism, and I know that our approach to getting visitors to come to Wheat Ridge is quite a bit different, but I would think that we, from time to time, may want to bring the issue up, discuss it, see if there are other things that the city of Wheat Ridge can do to bring people that don't live in Wheat Ridge to Wheat Ridge and enjoy all the things that our city has to offer. Thanks.
Thank you. For the reports, Counselor Snell.
I'll be brief. Two quick things. One, we had our first Idea Committee meeting this past Tuesday, and I really, it's an incredible group of folks. We're going to do great things. I know there's so much good energy and just so much depth of knowledge and so many things from the members of that committee, but none of that would be possible if it weren't for Mary Ann and Carly, and I just want to recognize them and all of that, all they did to get us set up for success, because a first meeting of a group like that, you really have to really be aware of, you know, how folks are interacting and the activities that they do, and it was just, it was great. So thank you so much. And then, coming up this Sunday at 4 o'clock, is the Panorama Park Sustainable Neighborhood Bike Ride. It will leave from Panorama Park, the corner of 33rd and Fenton, and we will ride around. There's some pre-planned stops to look at different gardens, and then it ends at Mestizo, so bonus. So please join us on Sunday at 4:00. Bring your bike.
Thank you. Mayor Proten Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to the people who put on the Farmer's 5,000 at Wheat Ridge High School yesterday. It was a great event. My family and I ran in it. Big shout-out to Prospect Valley, who is now a two-time champion for the elementary schools, and I think the only reason Prospect Valley is, is because College Strand joined them, and we were a three-time champion before that, so, just saying. But it's a great fundraiser for the school, and they always do a fantastic job. So thank you to everybody who did that.
Thank you. Additional elected officials' matters. I had one. I went to a ribbon-cutting for Twisted Smoothie at 38th and Pierce on the southeast corner, just a little bit southeast of there, but Josh Hudson used to be over at 29th and Depew Street, and has now, he's got a mobile, mobile smoothie vehicle, I guess, but he's got a real nice shop presence there, so he's got a permanent presence. So I think everybody, I really appreciate it, got a great product, great smoothies. So if you're in the mood for a Twisted Smoothie, please go over and see Josh Hudson at Twisted Smoothie. So we will, we will be back here at 6:30, one week from tonight, for a regular meeting, so we hope to see everybody there. Thank you all for being here tonight. We will stand adjourned.